We have seven. No, we have seven.
All right. Good morning, everyone. That was really loud. I apologize. If I'm not loud enough, y'all are hearing me now. Good morning. Happy Tuesday. We've got a couple of people out today, and we do need to approve Ms. Sizemore-Hyzer, who submitted a written request to virtually attend this work session. All those in favor of approving her request, please raise your hands. Great. All right. That request is approved. I see you. Good morning, and we can begin. Ms. Tolan and Dr. Anderson will be our meeting managers this morning. No, I don't see Dr. Bray-Bran.
I can see my mic.
Okay. He will be here. Okay. Just steal one.
We all have mics. Let's do a mic check, literally. Dr. Boyd, is it just you?
No, I'm being joined by...
Okay. Wonderful. And do we have Ms. Forrest?
Perfect. Good morning. We are here for our SRNR work session. Thank you so much to staff for having all the documents ready. And I also want to say, I want to give a major thank you to Dr. Boyd and her team for ensuring that they engage with the board during the two-by-twos. I think that was very helpful in helping solicit questions pertaining to the SRNR. I do know that Dr. Boyd has a host of people who she'll be introducing, but we also have, in particular, one of the newest hearings officers who are here with us, Ms. Lisa Forrest. Where are you?
Ms. Forrest is en route, so we'll make sure we introduce her once she arrives.
Super. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and good morning to everyone. As you all know, I'm Michelle Boyd, Assistant Superintendent for Special Services, and I'll be presenting the annual update to the SRNR this morning. This morning, I am very fortunate to be joined by a number of persons. Ms. Deb Scott, who's a Director of Intervention and Prevention Services; Dr. Shannon Anderson, who's a Coordinator for Equity and Student Conduct; Candace Hunstead, who's a Principal of Herndon Elementary School; Craig Herring, who's a Principal of Whitman Middle School; and we'll also be joined later by Mr. Martin Grimm, Principal of Hayton Secondary School. So I just want to thank the team for being here and collaborating. This morning, we will review the following: themes identified during the annual SRNR review process; revisions made within the SRNR to address identified themes; and last but not least, the SRNR timeline. During our annual review process, feedback relative to the current SRNR is solicited from a variety of stakeholders, to include staff, students, school board members, and families. Following the compilation of feedback, we review the recommendations and identify the salient themes revealed as a result of our stakeholder engagement. This year, the following four themes emerged: clarity, clarifying expectations regarding acceptable use of technology to foster a safe environment for students and staff; clarifying expectations regarding alcohol, tobacco, and other drug offenses to support substance abuse prevention and intervention; clarifying processes outlined in the SRNR to foster consistent implementation of the discipline process across the school division; and, last but not least, adapting processes, systems, and expectations to meet the dynamic needs of our students and families. Within theme one, clarifying expectations regarding the acceptable use of technology, three revisions to the SRNR were made. Number one, clarifying, excuse me, language was added to the SRNR to include updates reflective of the proposed change to Regulation 6410, appropriate use of Fairfax County Public Schools Network and Internet Resources. Key texts from the revised regulation include, in the body of the document, includes incorporation of a responsibility for cybersecurity. The full regulation will be hyperlinked in the SRNR, and the full text of the acceptable use policy for student network access will be included in the appendix of the SRNR for student and family review. Notable additions to the acceptable use policy for students includes expectation for use of social media, the requirement to comply with all cybersecurity policies, information regarding tampering with FCPs technologies, and expectations for taking photographs or videographs, video recordings. The second revision is the inclusion of guidelines regarding the use of personal cell phones that delineates expectations for cellphone use by school level, elementary, middle, and high. The final revision within the acceptable use theme is the incorporation of the definition of cyberbullying to the Student Behavior and Administrative Code chart. While the definition is currently included in the glossary and multiple sections of the SRNR Family Guide, the definition was added to the chart for increased clarity. We now shift to theme two, which is clarifying expectations about alcohol, tobacco, and other drug offenses. Within this theme, there were five revisions to the SRNR. The first revision is an edit to clarify the difference and the consequence as it relates to drug, distribution of drugs. This revision is a technical revision to a particular section of the SRNR where a typo existed. This does not represent a substantive change to the current SRNR. Distribution continues to be a mandatory referral to the superintendent. The second revision is the elimination of the reference to principals administering drug tests when there is a suspicion of drug use. This language has been included in the SRNR for multiple years. However, principals do not implement this practice. In order to ensure consistency across the school division, this language has been removed. School administrators have and will continue to receive guidance and professional development regarding being signs of substance abuse as an alternative. The third revision is changing the word "may" to "shall" in reference to principals recommending substance abuse resources when there was a violation that involves illegal drugs. This revision is meant to promulgate the expectation and to align the written text with the original intent. The next revision is clarity that when students are assigned to alcohol, tobacco, and other drug intervention as a result of first-time ATOT offenses, students will receive a consequence not to exceed one day of out-of-school suspension for failure to successfully complete the intervention. This change was made due to the importance of this targeted intervention that it has in educating students on the importance of making healthy choices. The final revision within this theme is providing additional clarity regarding the response to first-time use or possession of alcohol inhalants or marijuana, which is generally up to two days of in-school suspension versus second and subsequent offenses, which would generally result in school-based consequences or suspension from school for up to two days. The SRNR continues to include language that, given unique circumstances of a situation, a suspension of up to five days can be imposed by a principal, or a six-to-ten-day suspension with a referral to a superintendent in situations that meet one of the three delineated criterions displayed on the screen. The third theme from this year's SRNR, clarifying processes to foster consistent implementation of the discipline process, yielded five revisions. The first revision within this theme was clarification of language regarding the proposed purpose, excuse me, purpose of individualized education program meetings for students with disabilities when they are reassigned for disciplinary purposes. In accordance with special education regulations, IEP teams will determine students' educational setting for students with disabilities when the school assignment would constitute a change in placement. In cases where students with disabilities are reassigned for disciplinary reasons and the reassignment would not result in a change of placement, the IEP team will convene to review the IEP and/or to determine if any additional supports or services are needed. Please note that the second paragraph listed on the screen was a recent update and will be reflected in the next update to the SRNR red line prior to board action. The next revision relates to students' rights to complain. Currently, students can communicate complaints verbally or in writing. Language was added to express that written complaints are preferred as it reduces the likelihood that a complaint will be misinterpreted. However, submitting complaints verbally continues to be an available option. The third revision within consistent implementation of the discipline process is the added language and the leveled responses on the charts that explicitly identifies two variables to be considered, frequency and intensity, when determining the need to implement up to a five-day suspension. The fourth revision was an added footnote to reinforce that out-of-school suspension is not permissible for attendance infractions. This revision was added for emphasis and is not a substantive change from the current SRNR. The fifth and final revision was the addition of the subcode "group assault" under assault to differentiate from when there is a one-on-one assault. This locally-developed code is for internal use as an additional data point and feeds into the overall category of assault for state reporting and other reporting purposes as the local code is not recognized by the state. Theme four, adapting to meet the dynamic needs of families resulted in two provisions. Number one, infractions that were previously delineated as case six are now delineated as case three to distinguish the level of understanding and impact of students in lower elementary school. The delineation of different responses for students in grades three and below versus four through 12 would mirror the distinction that is in the Code of Virginia relative to out-of-school suspensions for students in third grade and below. The second revision is a change in the timeline for appeals to the Division Superintendent, commonly known as appeals to the hearing office. The timeline for appeals to the Division Superintendent has been extended from two days to four business days to give students and families more time to appeal, given the elevated level of the appeal. The final four revisions under other revisions do not fall within the four established themes and are not substantive changes. These revisions reflect format or wording changes to clarify the following: SRNR distribution and stakeholder engagement, excuse me, stakeholder orientation; and on the next slide, alignment of the narrative of the S-bar chart, S-bar code updates, and the expanded definition for discriminatory harassment. Ongoing professional learning is going to be key to ensuring we're able to provide a climate conducive to teaching and learning where students feel safe, valued, and respected. It is also important to foster the implementation fidelity such that staff understand the SRNR, have a variety of skills to identify when behaviors are escalating and are able to intervene early, and understand how to disaggregate and analyze disciplined data to inform practice in schools and across the division. Looking ahead, we will have the opportunity to receive feedback from you today regarding the proposed changes to the SRNR, and will continue to collaborate with stakeholders in the coming weeks in advance of our May 12 business meeting, where the SRNR is tentatively scheduled as an item for action. At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to publicly thank all stakeholders that have and will provide feedback regarding the SRNR, as it is invaluable to our ongoing commitment for improvement such that we foster a safe, welcoming environment for all students. This now concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Boyd. Just to set the stage a little bit, we have until 3 o'clock for the SRNR component of our work session. We will be breaking for lunch at 1 o'clock. Until that point, we will have the board members make their comments and ask their questions in three-minute increments. Just a reminder to staff, for the sake of efficiency, you will also be timed in your responses, so please be succinct, but do not let yourself not be thorough. So having said that, we are going to go ahead and start with our first board member, Ms. Co... Oh, I'm so sorry, Dr. Bray-Bran.
Dr. Anderson, I think Dr. Ivy wanted to make a comment, and maybe I have one before we get started.
Well, why don't we go ahead and just turn the floor over to you and Dr. ...
I just wanted to ask Dr. Boyd to introduce. We had some members of the team join after the, after she got started, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew who was here today.
Thank you. I know one in particular we're waiting with bated breath, so Dr. Boyd, and then Dr. Bray-Bran.
Well, good morning again. I think that many of you know Mr. Martin Grimm. Thank you so much. Let me emphasize...
Doctor!
...Dr. Martin Grimm, so we want to give him kudos. Thank you so much for joining us, and we've introduced our other principals, and I just want to highlight that our collaboration with our building leaders is really, really critical during this process. They push our thinking, they stretch our thinking, and they're the ones that are implementing this on a ground level, and so collaborating with them and having their feedback is really, really important. And we are also joined today by Ms. Lisa Forrest, who is the hearing office, the new hearing officer, and I know many of you have been anticipating seeing her face. She has also been key in collaborating during this process. While Ms. Forrest's office falls under a different chief, we work very, very closely as we talk about the SRNR, as we talk about mental health, as we talk about supporting students with disabilities, and so we're going to, she's our extended sister, if you will, to DSS. We got to make a little dotted line over, because it really, really is that close working partnership. I'm going to let Ms. Forrest give you just a little bit of background about herself and also just talk about any updates that she wants to share regarding some changes in the hearing office that I know that you're very much interested in. So at this time, please join me in welcoming Ms. Lisa Forrest.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you. I have been in Fairfax County for about approximately 20 years. I left for a short period of time, have experience at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. I've worked as a special education teacher, special education administrator, and administrator at Annandale High School. In the hearings office, we have made a significant number of changes this school year, transitioning from a punitive approach to discipline to more restorative practices. Most recently, we have hired a social worker to work directly in our office to work with students, families, and the hearing officers to identify appropriate resources to support students and families who are in particular high need of mental health services, some social help. We have increased the accessibility of hearing office information. We have increased the availability of hearing office packets to families. I ran the data yesterday, and it went from less than 20% of families receiving a packet to about 70% of the families now receiving a packet. We've changed our process in offering the packets, so a higher level of families are receiving the packets prior to the hearing so that they have that information available to them so that they can advocate for their students during the hearing. We've changed our decision-making to be in line with VDOE's model guidance, where we placement reviews were done quarterly, I'm sorry, semestral. Now we do it each semester for all students placed in alternative school settings, not just upon parent request. We have enhanced our interdepartmental communication with the Title IX Office, Restorative Justice Office, making direct referrals formally in our decision letters to the restorative justice process. We do not place students unless the student has engaged in serious misconduct, which involves statutory weapons, controlled possession of controlled substances, or engaging in behavior that involves serious bodily injury, more than 45 days to an alternative school if the hearing officer deems that to be appropriate. I think I've covered quite a bit. Let me just look at my notes here to make sure I didn't miss some of the key things. I think that pretty much highlights some of the changes that we've made that are significant to impacting students and families. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Bray-Bran?
Thirty seconds or less. So many things for this board to be proud of. One of the things that you should be extraordinarily proud of is your real wholesale revision of the SRNR with an eye to equity, with an eye to restorative justice. I want to thank Dr. Boyd, one of my last times to get to do it publicly, for her leadership as she came in, not only to lead us through the pandemic with health services, but to really help us reimagine SRNR. That work began with Dr. Johnson, but Dr. Boyd has been able to really push it through. What's before you today are more enhancements and tweaks rather than wholesale changes. We made major, major changes, and then we had the pandemic, in a sense, freeze those in place, and now this year in particular, as 99.5% of our kids are back in person, we're seeing how the new SRNR is working with kids and families in schools, so we brought you tweaks that we think will continue to refine and move forward the vision that this board has had around equity and restorative justice while also maintaining clear expectations for how we want kids to behave, and we know those behaviors have been challenging as kids have returned back to school in person. So we look forward to the dialogue today. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one piece of housekeeping before we get started with the board members. One of the documents that is posted is the revision to the acceptable use policy. I just want to make sure that I call attention to that document for the school board members so that if you have an inquiry or some feedback, this will be the time to provide that, Dr. Bray-Bran.
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Just one quick question to Ms. Forrest, because I kind of heard it milling around here as you were discussing the provision of the appeal packets to parents from 20% to 70%. The question that I'm hearing here is, how come all of the families are not recipients of that packet?
We offer the packets to every single family. Only about 70% ask for a copy, so they're available to 100% of the families. It's simply not all say that they want a copy, but we've changed the process in how we offer it. Initially, it used to be just, simply in writing. Now we verbally offer it at the time of the hearing, and so families say yes or no they want to receive a copy of it.
Very well. Thank you so much. So we will now begin with Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
And I, forgive me, but you probably have to add me for a go-back. I've got four pages of comments that I will send your way. A few of them revolve around conversations that we've had, but we continue a lot of places to use "parents." I'm looking at like page one, section one, page one, section two. Instead of using "parents/guardian" or "family," we just, I would love somebody to just do a search, a word search of the word "parent," and let's fix that everywhere. A couple of things I certainly want to welcome, Ms. Forrest. Thank you so much. We appreciate, and we look forward to being partners with you in how we do a better job of really helping our students who are struggling get in the right place for them, and it has definitely been a concern of several members of this board for, I know, a long time. I still would ask, as you look to restructure, I will repeat my often said, you know, request that I really wish with any kid who has an IEP that walks into the hearings office, I would like there to be sped support personnel in those hearings. I still feel like we are missing the mark by not having somebody in there during those hearings to make sure that the conversations are developmentally appropriate, that the body language cues, all kinds of things that I firmly believe we are missing in some of our discipline conversations. But thank you, and thanks for the work ahead. The first thing I just want to ask, I want to make sure that ACSD and MSAOC are going to see this SRNR and have an opportunity to provide feedback to you guys before we vote on this on the 12th.
We can certainly engage with all of the school board-appointed committees to ensure that everybody has access and ability to offer some comments, so we'll schedule a time where any school board committee representative can join us so that we can be efficient in getting our feedback.
I think that'd be great. I mean, I think when we look at the students with disabilities and Black and Brown students are impacted by the effects of this so much more, that we know they're interacting with discipline, I think getting those two committees' feedback on this is really important. And next question, the language that you put up from page 56 was new to us. It's not the same in the red line, and you referenced that, so I wondered if you would mind pulling that up and walking us through that a little bit more specifically.
If we can pull up slide seven of the SRNR presentation. That's what you're referring to, the reassignment language?
Yeah, because on page 56 in the red line, it's, you mentioned that it's different.
Correct. So the language, just while we're pulling that up, we continue, as we shared, we continue to have stakeholder engagement, and so at some point, we had to stop making changes to the document and were more readily able to make changes to the presentation. So the change from the document that, or the red line that you have here, the intent of IEP meetings, excuse me, IEP teams convening to discuss and determine placement, that's something that's required and needed under special education regulations. Anytime there will be a change in placement, and so that's the language that's currently included in the red line. But what we've also added is "in circumstances," which is the second paragraph, "when there's not a change in placement." So we're not changing student services, the student's least restrictive environment. Anytime that reassignment does not result in a change in placement, the IEP team will still meet, but their charge will be to review the IEP and/or to determine if any additional supports or services are needed. So we just wanted to clarify the intent of the IEP meeting under those different circumstances.
So this is in addition to, not meant to replace what's in...
Correct. So the red, what's in the red line now will stay with the, will stay, and also added, oh, I'm looking like I'm highlighting. That didn't work. Also added, excuse me, Ms. Forrest, will be the second paragraph that will go below what's currently in the red line, and again, my apologies for not having that. I know that was a key point of folks' purpose, but like I said, just with timing, we just couldn't get it.
No, that's super helpful. I misunderstood you to say that it was replacing what was in the red line, and so I couldn't, okay. And when you're talking about placement, though, just for the record, I want folks to know this placement would, if you're changing schools...
That's correct. I know which one's...
That's a change of placement, right?
So if you're changing schools, that's change in school assignment. Change in placement for special education refers to a change in your least restrictive environment, so whether we're going from a public-day school to a public, separate school, and it also means if we're changing your educational setting for special education purposes. So I was receiving Algebra I in a special education setting. If I'm not going to be receiving that in a special education setting, that also... and make those decisions collectively as a body. And that includes receiving consent from the parent. When there's not a change in placement and there's only a change in school assignment, that is not governed by the special education process. So, if Michelle is reassigned from Fairfax High School to Chantilly High School, my IEP can be implemented in both places. That IEP team, excuse me, will gather to review my IEP, look at the services, does Michelle need any additional support or services? Do we garner any additional information from this last infraction that we need to have some other things on the table? They have the opportunity to do that, but their charge, that distinguishes it from, we now know Michelle can't go to any FCPS comprehensive or public day school, so I can't go to a Chantilly or Fairfax or Woodson. My options are then things like home-based, public, public separate school, private day, things like that. So, that's the distinction between the two. And thank you so much for that question. The other thing that we have in our notes to add is that we're going to be adding to the glossary, a definition of change in placement so that folks understand that between school assignments. So, that's going to also be added for clarity to ensure that all of our stakeholders have more than my 30 seconds of rambling, or three minutes probably.
And I still am going to argue what I know I have said to you behind the scenes, which is that a school placement, I still feel strongly that our IEP teams need to be engaged in that process because our schools are not all created equal. And so, if we have a hearings officer that says, like Braddock is going to be the school assignment, but nothing else changes, we have an IEP team that best knows that kid to say, you know what, 4,500-person school is maybe not the right way. And this kid may be headed to a CSS, so I'd rather see him put into a Chantilly or a Woodson where we're not going to make another transition. So, I still have a big problem with this language and I understand that what the state requires is a floor. So, I'm struggling with this. I know I'm through with my time. Please put me on the back list.
Absolutely. You're fine. I think we'll have plenty of time to return. Just to help us with a little bit of housekeeping after you've spoken, school board members, if you could also just take a placard down, that would be helpful. And also, please, as a reminder, Ms. Medea has sent the next steps chart. So, if you have those questions, please be sure that we add them into the next steps. Ms. Corbett Sanders followed by Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you. And I too will probably need a go-back on this. I want to thank you for the extensive work that you've done. I especially appreciate the expansion of the cybersecurity section. I am a little concerned about a couple of things. One, the change to the acceptable use is limited to, acceptable use on our premises is limited to employees and to students. But we know we have volunteers in our schools and we also know on certain special occasions such as like holiday fairs where they have a big marketplace, people are, and when we have board of supervisors meetings in our buildings and other meetings, that there needs to be a temporary acceptable use for people using our buildings. And so, if we could address that in that policy, I'd appreciate it. Secondly, I'm going to focus most of my comments on the pages 34 through 37, which I do think is an extensive addresses, one of the biggest challenges our schools have today, which is the use of drugs and alcohol. It's a problem not only in our schools, but it's a problem across our society. And I am particularly concerned that we describe all different types of substances, but we don't actually address what I consider to be the biggest threat to our society right now, which is the use of opioids and the use of illegal opioids that have actually been treated with fentanyl. And so, I would like to see very specific language in our SRNR. But coupled with that very specific language is, I see that we're going to educate our students semi-annually, which is twice a year. But I think we actually need to have not only an education of our students semi-annually, but specific outreach to parents semi-annually to educate them on these issues. And so, I would like to hear your feedback on that concept.
So, the, actually, and I'm checking our section for the red line, we actually are adding semi-annual orientation for families in our stakeholder orientation section. And that's why I was looking at the red line revisions, what got in with. And also, we want to provide opportunities because that's asynchronous, but we also want to provide some two-way opportunities for parents to talk through. And so, that's in a draft that has not yet been uploaded to Board Docs, but we did talk thoroughly about that. With regard to the opioids, we'll certainly follow up. Illegal drugs, we can certainly put some examples here because many of those things will fall in our illegal drugs section that is already included. But I know that, I get a sense that given our current context, we want to call it out specifically. And so, we'll certainly consult with legal on that matter.
Okay. And then additionally, I'd like to have as part of our SRNR, a list of resources available in the community to help students with not only these issues, but issues such as social media and others. And so, I'm happy to work with you, especially on the cybersecurity piece, to help you with getting those resources. Regarding literature distribution and giving the option for our students to decide on appropriate literature, I would like to see a link back in that section to the language in, I think it's K, which describes acceptable messaging on clothing. Because I think that should be the framework for literature that is also distributed. Do you need me to pull it up?
No, we're just taking some notes. And if we need any clarity, we'll follow up. And I'm just taking notes as you speak.
Okay. And then, I will need a go-back. Thank you.
Do you mind, Ms. Corbett Sanders, just on the clarity there, the distribution of literature, the right of kids to distribute literature, you want to link back to that, to the dress code?
The same language that's in the dress code, which clarifies what is acceptable language and what's not. So, if it is vulgar, if it is sexual in content, if it's promoting drug use, if it's, you know, all sorts of things that we don't want done in our schools, but we're now giving responsibility, we need to frame that responsibility with what they'll be held accountable to.
Thanks.
Ms. Keys-Gamarra.
Thank you. I really appreciate everybody being here and I'm grateful to get some of the overview. I want to start with outreach to stakeholders. One of my colleagues mentioned making sure the advisory committees had an opportunity to respond or get this information. Do we have any specific outreach planned for affinity groups that I know have been contacting me about the concerns regarding SRNR so that there's like a meeting of explanation prior to the time for the vote?
We did not have any other meetings scheduled with any other community groups of any kind. But again, I think that what I'm hearing is greater, the desire to have greater feedback or broader range of feedback. And so, I think what we can do so that we don't, because what we don't want to do is to begin to call out certain groups and then inevitably, when we invite certain groups, you miss, you miss other folks and we don't want.
I'm not suggesting that. I know, I'm the liaison to Title I, so we had an opportunity to have an explanation there that generated a great deal of conversation. We ran over and just had to let people go to sleep. But I'd like to, you know, at least have a public kind of meeting where people who are interested have an opportunity to get an explanation prior to the vote.
Absolutely. And that's what, Deb and I, we're taking quick notes here. I think that what we'll do is we'll certainly send those invitations to all the school board advisory committee groups and also do some work with OCCR so that other stakeholders will have an opportunity to come and provide feedback again so that no one is omitted so the folks know about the opportunity to do so.
Right. Thank you. And I also want to thank Ms. Forrest for giving us some updates on what's happening with the hearings office. You mentioned a couple of things that I was a little unfamiliar with, so if I could get some more information. You stated more restorative practices and you hired a social worker. What, can you give us a description of what that means with respect to those restorative practices? And I'm particularly asking because in getting feedback from some of our staff members, they have felt with our changes, sometimes we're sending the message that they're not supposed to make referrals to the hiring, to the hearings office. So, I'm just kind of trying to balance that and make sure everybody understands where we are.
Certainly. And so, what we look at in terms of our decision-making is balancing the resources and supports we put in place for the student who is referred to our office and the safety of our schools. And so, we have solicited the help from, and prior to hiring an actual social worker to work directly in our office, we consulted with the Department of Special Services. And we have updated the intervention summary form so that we understand what supports and services might have been put in place to help this student change behavior. And so, as opposed to looking at a behavior and administering a consequence just for that behavior, but looking at behavior in a more of a holistic form, why, looking at the why of the behavior, not just the behavior itself. And so, there are times when we can determine that an intervention is more appropriate than reassigning to a different school. It could be done independently or in connection with a reassignment placement if we believe that the student at the time being is not safe to be in a more comprehensive school setting, but needs a smaller, more supervised setting. And so, when I talk about a less punitive, it's kind of looking at the whole child and the circumstances of the supports and services in place.
So, is that a step that the social worker is helping you with? And kind of, just so you know, I'm familiar with the diversion program with the courts and that sort of thing. And we have not had a formalized type of avenue for our students when they have a problem. And so, I'm wondering, you know, how is that implemented? Is this ad hoc? Is this, you know, case-by-case basis? Is the social worker overseeing this process so that we can make sure it's implemented with fidelity?
Currently, it's case-by-case. Our social worker is only part-time. This year, I hired her with part, hourly money. So, she's only with us twice a week. Money has been put in the budget for her to be full-time. And so, as we are reviewing the packet, looking at some of the concerning behaviors and the needs of students and families and the information that parents provide during the hearing, we make the referral to our social worker. And that, there are times when we'll call the social worker down immediately to speak with a student and family during, immediately after the hearing. But then, other times, it's following up with the family after the hearing. We also have the social worker and students transitioning from alternative school placements back to their base school to follow up with school-based social workers so that in relaying the information about the interventions and supports that have been put in place at the alternative school setting so that they have that more of a liaison in that transition to make sure that they're successful.
Okay. I do appreciate all the effort. I just, from our viewpoint, where board members start to see some of these cases, it's a sometimes, right? There's a sometimes there's a record and sometimes there's not. And so, I guess my comments are going toward how do we move toward that fidelity of implementation so that we're making sure that we're actually having that step take place?
All right, Mike, please, go ahead.
If I could just add, I think we've gone back and had some discussions around some additional professional development that we need to do with principals and assistant principals and really with assistant principals who are doing much of this work. And we have plans to do that particularly this summer, to take a step back and to work with them prior to the beginning of the next school year. And so, I think that will help and we will see a change for the coming school year.
I appreciate that. I realize we are evolving and so, it's a ever-increasing trying to improve. With my last few seconds, I'd like to look at page 13. There's been, paragraph four refers to five or more unexcused absences. As I've talked to a number of schools across the region, we've seen more absences after the pandemic. So, I'm wondering how that is hitting your office and how the board might be more fully apprised of this particular issue. And I'll need a go-back.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. We do monitor and schools also monitor students that are having attendance challenges, whether they're unexcused or excused because we know chronic absenteeism impacts students overall as well. But we can certainly see if we can incorporate updates around unexcused absences, if that would be something that the board would be interested in receiving in a Monday letter or other form at a certain juncture. But we are monitoring that. We do know that our office, our attendance staff that monitor attendance are working closely with schools. We know that there's been some concern about, you know, or certain things being referred to the courts. They really have limited our ability and given feedback that referrals won't be accepted. After a certain time, no more referrals will be referred or be accepted this year. So, we're really trying to work internally and certainly just referring it to the courts. We know that's not a solution, but sometimes that helps to get the needed parties all at the table to make some decisions. So, we are monitoring that. We do know that that's a challenge this year.
Thank you very much. Our next board member is Ms. Olmesh followed by Ms. Seizmoheiser.
Thank you. Happy to follow, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. I first do want to welcome though Ms. Forrest and congratulate Dr. Grimm. It's great to hear the news and of course, thank you to our staff in general for your hard work on this. I kind of wanted to take a different approach. I think there are certainly some welcome changes in what we've seen in terms of revisions. And I look forward to discussing those with Dr. Boyd in the next week or so. But I wanted to ask about two different things. One, I know that, you know, we implemented a new way of collecting data and having schools kind of do some of that review on the school level to examine disparity, et cetera, as an innovative approach before our former head of special services left. And I'm wondering where we've left off on that. Have we been able to benefit from that data? I'm not sure if it was halted because of COVID or what the status of that is, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about it.
Certainly. So, we have implemented our universal discipline referral system and we are working to collaborate with schools and also IT to create some more user-friendly reports for our school-based leaders. We do have dialogues and are re-engaging with our discipline dated dialogues with RAS and EP so that we can begin looking at what might be trends or themes across the region, across the school division in certain pyramids. But wanting to work to get some additional user-friendly reports for our school-based leaders, we know that they're working to lead many assets. And so, we want the data that they're able to extract. We want them to be able to spend more time on the analysis as opposed to pulling and extracting data. So, that's a work in progress. But we have been looking at disproportionality, risk ratios, things of that nature, with some of our fractions that may be different this year than we've seen in years past. But we continue to look at that data. We're not yet naturally where we want to be in terms of our data outcomes or our discipline outcomes, but we're moving in that right direction in terms of having those discussions.
Can you talk about a little bit more specifically what that looks like?
Sure. So, as you know, we provided the board with a number of discipline reports as a result of some board follow-on action. So, we looked at our suspension reports. We looked at discipline referral reports. We disaggregated that by race and ethnic groups, also by student disability groups. Those are the same reports and same data that we're discussing with RAS and EPs who provide leadership for schools in turn so that they can have those conversations with their school-based leaders. The piece that I'm talking about, about having more user-friendly reports is, that's something that we do at the aggregate at the central office level and we're able to make those analyses and we have a team of folks to do that. But we know that we just don't want to look at data after the fact. We know that we want schools to be able to have an efficient way of looking at that data so that they can adjust their practices. If Dr. Grimm, for example, is looking at a certain area, he wants to be able to monitor that data on an ongoing, regular basis to have discussions with his staff members about all the strategies we are implementing, being efficient and helpful and getting us toward our targeted goal. But we don't want Dr. Grimm or his team to have to do a lot of legwork to get the data so that they can begin discussion. So, that's the piece that we're working on. But schools do have a variety of ways that we're looking at their data and I know our principals are here and can talk to you about that. But we're working on trying to find a consistent way so that when we say we're pulling our data reports, Dr. Grimm is pulling that report that has the same factors, Ms. Hunt that is pulling the same report. So, we all can have that common language. But I certainly will give the floor, if there's time, to our principals that might be able to provide you with some more detail.
Yeah, I'd like to hear how it works. If there are schools, just as, you know, examples.
have that common language. But I certainly will give the floor, if there's time, to our principals that might be able to provide you with some more detail.
Yeah, I'd like to hear how it works. There are schools, just as, you know, examples, obviously. But to your point, I'm concerned about making sure there's a cyclical kind of expectation of this is the, you know, this is the season when we're reviewing the data. And that informs changes that we come up with. I mean, I'm struggling a little bit to, you know, provide potentially additional recommendations or to be innovative about how we think of this without knowing how it's played out on the ground so far. But please, I'd like to hear from our principals.
All right, we'll go one, two, three. So, we have, we have a high school, so since we're middle, or a secondary school. So, we have a middle school and a high school CT that meets every week. And every quarter, we look at a lot of data, not in the same meaning necessarily, but we do look at a number of referrals. We also break down our number of referrals by grade and gender, ethnicity, all of those. And then, we also look at what types of referrals that we're receiving, kind of trying to implement really, you know, a PBIS-type philosophy where you're looking at specific areas, specific offenses, specific groups, and then where we can deploy our Sosa. At the high school level, we have the Sosa for my middle school colleagues. I will, I'll put a plea in for Sosa at the middle school level, once again, as a member of the MSPA as well. But, so, we do look at that at least every quarter, every quarter. And then, our CTs are made up of our assistant principals, our directors of student services, and our Sosa sits on both of those. So, that's kind of how we do it at Afield. So, we are constantly looking at it and then trying to identify areas of need and focus.
Thanks, Dr. Grimm. At Herndon, we look at ours through our MTSS process. That's how we look at our referrals. And the members of our MTSS CLT, our assistant principal, our social worker, our school psychologist. We're lucky enough at Herndon that we have full-time school psychologists and social worker. And then, also, our two counselors are on there as well, and our special ed lead chair, and then our ESOL department chair as well. And we look at our referrals. We also look at what wraparound services we're giving that student, whether, what supports we have in place, and then what the communication has been with the family. If we need to, we include our family liaisons so that we're communicating and being more proactive with the families as well. We tend to look at that data bimonthly. We don't just, don't have the number of referrals as my middle and high school colleagues do. But that's how we look at the data in the elementary level.
I won't add anything different to the process that they described because it's very similar at my school and what I've heard from my colleagues. I will say that the referral system itself just came out in January, I believe it was launched. So, there's been a lot of in-house working with our teachers on how to use it properly, norming a little bit so that we're understanding when a referral comes in, what level it's coming in, at what kind of urgency and so forth. So, we're learning. I think the third quarter data is not going to be probably the best at first, but I know this fourth quarter, we launched it again, and we're seeing a lot more confidence and consistency in how it's being used.
No, I appreciate that. And then centrally, what happens with, once the reviews are done on the school level?
Yes. So, again, we work in partnership, and I see some of our EPs and RAS in the room. We work in partnership with those leaders who provide support for schools so that, you know, as Terry's working with her region, she may just be thinking about what's happening in her region. But when we're having discussion, and Douglas is there, and Becky is there, we're saying, this is not just a region issue, this is a division issue. And we can look at what are some things we need to do proactively. I know that Dr. Grimm referred to PBIS, our positive behavior intervention and supports. We do want to look at our strategies. And we've all talked as a collective team, is that we have to go back and reset to some of the basics, teaching expected behaviors and knowing that we, what students might be able to do at home or in other settings, we respect and honor that. But this is what's expected in FCPS across schools. This is the expected behavior in the cafeteria, in the bathroom, in the hallways, that we have to reset some of those tier-one practices so that then our needs get smaller, and we can really see Shannon really needs some additional supports. Because even with those, teaching her the expected behaviors, she's still struggling. And we can then identify what are those interventions that are most appropriate for Shannon, and can monitor her data and her outcomes and make adjustments as needed. So, it's an ongoing, fluid process, and that's just something that I want to just emphasize. We're looking at data, but it's not just for the sake of crunching numbers. We know that it won't change overnight, but we're looking to see our strategies helping us to move in the right direction.
Right. No, and that's a great, it's good to hear the conversations have started around that. I'm wondering, has that been reflected in any of the proposals we're looking at or in some of the changes that we're hoping to make this year?
So, as we shared before, and I, you know, when we met with our school, our building leaders, we had a little arrow that shows the history. And I know it was mentioned before. But right now, we're really still in the infancy stages of implementing this SRNR. So, some years ago, there was the discipline reviews that were done. There were two external reviews and internal review, and also changes at the state that informed the development of our 1920 SRNR. Then, we had COVID partial. Then, most kids were out last year. So, this year is really the first year of implementing the SRNR. And we've received that feedback, and that data has informed what we're doing, which is one of the reasons why we are a little more strong or persistent about students engaging in that alcohol, tobacco, and other drug intervention. So, that's one of the things that that data did inform some of the things that we're doing. But again, I just can't reinforce enough that we're still early. As Mr. Herring said before, the referral system is just a couple of months in, and we're still having those implementation changes and learning how to do those things. So, I think we'll have more data to really reflect on and see if we need any major changes on next year. And I know Dr. Braybrand has his hand up.
Ms. Omeish, just one more thing on data. This really is the gear of taking all of this data and taking the deeper dive as we review the year. Ms. Corbett Sanders wanted me to remind the board, and it's just breaking, it was in your VSBA, that chronic absenteeism, because some of you were asking about absenteeism, chronic absenteeism as an indicator for accreditation. The Virginia Board of Education will not count that against schools this year for accreditation due to all the quarantines, the kids that were in isolation, because it was beginning to, in a sense, distort school district numbers. And it has been one of the indicators for accreditation since 2017. That just came over your VVS newsletter. But we're going to continue to look at all the discipline data, all of the attendance data. We'll share it publicly. And this new referral system is going to let us really pinpoint patterns. The fidelity of implementation, just remember, we had 200 schools with different referral systems for all these years. This is a massive move toward equity to have the same system, the same tracking. And we really think as these years move on, we're really going to get more refined at knowing the interventions, school by school, that we need to do to make sure kids are on the right track. Dr. Ivey?
And this is another example as well, where professional development will help us tremendously. And we kind of need to go back and do some additional professional development. And we rolled this out in January because we knew we had to. But we also, and so people are practicing and using the tool. But we need to go, we need to add in and have those conversations and professional development. And we'll be able to do that as we start a new school year.
Yeah, no doubt. I appreciate that. I guess I, I'm seeing this as an opportunity that I don't want us to miss, where we're getting some of this new data, this information. I appreciated the point on chronic absenteeism and drugs specifically. But the uptick in behavior, right, is something that we're hearing consistently across the board for expected reasons of what's happened over the past two years. But that leads me to think, can we come up with, can we work with our principals' associations? Can we look at that data again and come up with at least one solution or something that moves us forward before next year? Otherwise, we're going to have to wait a whole year and then roll out that addresses what we're observing in this area. Because we know it's, we know qualitatively, like we know anecdotally that that's happening. But I imagine it should inform our practice somehow or our changes this year.
And I don't want the group to be misled. The conversations that are being had amongst principals and also with central office support, folks are not just waiting until next year to implement some of those changes. Some principals said, hey, we've got to stop dropping, let's really have a talk with our students about the behavior that we expect. So, while we're talking about some of these things in the future, some of these things are happening now. What we're talking about in the SRNR will just be solidified as it gets reviewed. But certainly, many of these practices are happening now. And it's really based on the robust dialogue that we're having with principals, and they're sharing the things that are working in their schools that they're doing to help inform what happens in other buildings as well.
Ms. Omeish, two other quick things on this. First of all, one of the things I wanted you to know is, this element of health, we're still talking with our regional health partners. We have our budget coming up, and you all did follow-on motions. So, just stay tuned that I am fully aware of many of the board's priorities. Even if we don't have the full plan, that we need to placehold resources so that we can begin pilots of some of this kind of work, number one. And the other thing, and I can't escape what we, I wanted to share beyond that, and it'll come to me in the right time. But that is one of the areas that we know is still a resource issue. Oh, the state budget is still not done. There is forceful advocacy going on across school districts, across the Commonwealth, including in Fairfax, about additional beds for these kids in crisis. And I want you to know that Brian Hill and the Board of Supervisors and the School Board, we have sent clear messages downstate that the final agreement in the House and Senate has to have additional beds. We actually have kids, and this is no disrespect, it's just the reality, downstate kids are taking Northern Virginia beds because there's simply no staffing or no beds available. And our kids are waiting in line. We've got to have the resources necessary, and we're pushing hard. I'm hopeful the final agreement will have expansion for some of these critical code-red services for kids.
Dr. Grimm, did you want to?
I just wanted to add, you know, when you're asking about, you know, what schools and how we're being flexible and how we're being mobile. So, and I think that I can say this for all of the high school and the middle schools, you know, we do, like, we do pivot often. I'm sorry, that's a bad word from, yeah, that's a bad word from the old days. But we, so for example, instead of, you know, doing during an intervention block and putting up a slideshow for the SRNR review, you know, we went into PE classes and we went, you know, we had the associate principal and the principal. And we would go into classes and talk with kids and say, hey, here are the things that we're seeing, here are the behaviors, here's what we need you to do, this is the Hawkway. So, and we're not the only ones doing that. I mean, everybody's doing that. So, it is, it's a multifaceted problem, and there's multifaceted answers. So, in some ways, centrally, I don't know what they can do. Certainly, maybe they, maybe some tracking of what we're doing. But we are constantly doing that. We're constantly saying, we're, all the high schools are about to go into all of the government and English 12 classes and talk about prom in person, you know, not, not a, not a slide on a, on a computer. But we're going to go talk about prom. And this is what, you know, this is what responsible prom looks like. So, just so you know that that is happening, and that is happening in each school, even though it may look a little different.
Yeah, no, I don't doubt that our school leaders are doing a great job of problem-solving on the school level. I think, you know, on a system level, we may benefit from having, tethering this to conversations like the SRNR and, you know, doing that kind of innovative work in advance of line item, you know, revisions that we're going to just approve when this comes up, right? I think it just helps us be a little bit more innovative, creative, forward-thinking, proactive even, especially in a time when we're seeing these upticks. It helps us be more responsive in a timely way. But anyway, I know that's my time, obviously.
Everybody's on a go back. Ms. Seizmoheiser?
I will try not to get on a go back and break that chain. Thank you. I appreciate it. Can you guys hear me okay? Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Ms. Cohen's comments about the IEP teams and placement and reassignment. Dr. Boyd, I really appreciate your conversation yesterday with me about some of these pieces. One of the questions I had, and I don't know if there's a middle ground that can be found, when we look at reassignment versus, you know, new placement based on discipline, you know, I appreciate the addition that IEP teams will need to talk about, you know, supports and services that may be needed or view the IEP if there's a reassignment. But I'm wondering if there's some space to talk about the reassignment itself. So, for example, if a child has, and you and I talked about this yesterday a bit, has a team taught honors class at their current school, can the IEP team talk, make sure there's some conversation about ensuring that student has access to that same class, they don't have to lose the academics that they're getting? Is there a conversation about reassignment in terms of the size of the school, the services available at the school, the location of the school? So, just something to think about is, is there a way to have that conversation at the IEP team in a similar way we would do if there's a change of placement? So, I wanted to put that out there because I do think it's really important that, you know, students aren't widgets, schools aren't widgets, right, that they have access to the, to what they are already accessing in terms of academics. I also wanted to talk a little bit about our cell phone policy in the SRNR. And I've heard a lot from principals, teachers, and even students about the impact of cell phone usage on academics and in the schools. But this is going to be a culture shift, especially in high school, I think. And so, what are we doing to make sure that this can be implemented with fidelity, that in many ways, and I think students have gotten used to using cell phones, and even teachers have gotten used to sending out Google Forms, sending these things out, especially when it comes to promoting activities and extracurriculars? How are we going to make sure that we're just not sort of clogging up the discipline, sort of pipeline with how we implement this? Does that make sense? And I apologize, I'm actually pretty sick. So, I apologize if I'm not making sense here. I'll pause there for a second on that piece.
Thank you, Ms. Seizmoheiser. And you're making plenty sense. And again, we wish that you get well soon. Yes, there is, with the new cell phone, I'm trying to turn and look at you, and I don't know if you can see.
Well, I was pretty big on the screen from what I can see. It's kind of frightening, actually.
So, in terms of the cell phone changes, what Ms. Seizmoheiser is referring to, in case other folks who are listening may not know, we have articulated cell phone use by level. Generally speaking, elementary students will have their phones away for the duration of the school day. Middle school would be able to access their cell phones before the first bell and after the last bell. And high school students would be able to access their cell phones before the first bell, after the last bell, during lunch, and during class changes. And so, we do still have language in the SRNR that allows for staff to approve the use of cell phones if there would be a reason why they're doing a poll for a particular assignment, activity, feedback to the teacher, things like that. So, there still is that latitude. But just the feedback that we've received is that I assure many of us, if we don't have children, nephews, nieces, anyone, everyone has access to a child. And we know that the cell phone has kind of become an extension of the hand. There's your fingers, and then there's a cell phone that is quickly there. And we're finding that that is becoming somewhat problematic in terms of the instructional process, getting kids to transition. You don't want to engage in, while kids have their phones away, you didn't put it back soon enough while we're trying to get the lesson started. So, we really are trying to be very, very clear and also consistent across the school division. We don't want Michelle's a seventh grader at school X to have less access with my cell phone than Deb might have at school Y. And so, I know that consistency across the division is something that we've talked a lot about around this table. And so, that's what we're trying to do. To Ms. Omeish's previous point, we certainly will watch our data and let our data inform any change in practice. But we do know right now that those cell phones, those mobile devices are problematic, and we're trying to make some adjustments based on that data. And we'll work closely with our schools to that end, and certainly are engaging with them and feedback. And I know they've had, I know MSPA has been, I think they were the group that might be 70-30 in terms of the cell phone change. But we have engaged with principals to try and find a happy middle ground. And certainly, again, this whole stakeholder engagement will be key because it will be a change. And we want to make sure that families are aware so that they can, we can work collaboratively in supporting students around that. The intent, just to get to your point, Ms. Seizmoheiser, is not for this to be a discipline hole that we now create a whole nother hundred referrals about cell phones. But we really want to be able to get to the instructional process, and we want to be able to avoid some of the larger issues that have resulted from cell phone use that we found via our data on this year.
Yeah. And that's what I kind of wanted to get to, is just to have some grace period for students and staff to sort of adjust to this, right? And so, that way, we're not, and I'd love to hear from our high school principals and our middle school principals around this, if that's okay, in terms of what their thoughts are about implementation.
Dr. Grimm?
We'll go in reverse order if that's okay. I could talk to middle schools. So, we did have a meeting even just last week to confirm. We did take a poll around that. The 70-30, actually, the 30 included the secondary schools because they have a unique perspective on that. So, it was really a larger percentage of pure middle schools. And then, in the end, everyone, we came to consensus that it was the right route. Some of our schools, including Whitman and Herndon Middle, have already engaged in this a way. away for the day practice and can speak to our data in terms of decrease in social media issues happening during the day and just a more focus on instruction. I will say that we also, as middle school principals, talked about the fact that I don't think cell phones are going away. And just putting them away is not necessarily the final answer, but it's a good step right now as we engage with instructional services on our digital citizenship lessons to be a little more focused on handheld devices. A lot of that talks about surfing the internet and everything, which we didn't have so many kids with handheld devices maybe four or five years ago when a lot of that curriculum was developed. So we want to educate our students, but in the meantime, we need to kind of stop the damage that's happening of inappropriate use. And so away for the day right now, I feel like is the correct policy for us.
I can kind of speak from both lenses as well. So the, our, so we're, we're, we do on our middle school have a way for the day, which is different than the high school. We try to keep our, we try to stay as consistent as we can across seven through 12. And I will tell you, our experience on the middle school side has been very, very good. We have.
It's hot. They're going to give you a hug. I don't care.
Somebody has a hot mic and doing a lot of hugging. We can pause the love, so. I hate to say that, let's pause the love a little bit.
Nothing is going to happen. We're all young, vibrant ladies.
Can we mute whoever is not speaking, which is pretty much everybody on the panel, Ms. Medeja?
All right. So, you know, I will tell you, our middle school, our middle school students have adjusted fine. They would argue with us a little bit on that, but our teachers report that they're more focused in class and that it's not really a discipline issue for us. You know, we will, we would take it, we give it back to them. And on the high school side, I think it's a little bit different issue. There, we haven't really had a lot of discussion at the HSBA, but I don't know that, we're not going to get to 70-30 at the HSBA. It's hurting cats with the HSBA. And everybody's got a little bit different view. And then additionally, I think developmentally, teaching 10th, 11th, 12th graders how to use that technology because they're going to, they're going to go into the world very soon is different than teaching 7th and 8th graders. And I'm not saying we shouldn't teach 7th and 8th graders, I'm just saying that developmentally, it's a little bit different situation. So that's kind of where we are on that. But I will say, we implemented it this year and it's not been a discipline issue for us. If it's a discipline issue, it's, it's, it's more, it's a kid that is struggling with other things and that phone is, it's more of the defiance in that what that phone represents to the kid, it's not really the phone. So it's not a large scale issue at all.
Thank you. My main point I wanted to make with that, and I think you covered it well, is that for our high schools, I mean, phones aren't going away, we do need to teach them how to use them properly, but I also understand it's a huge issue in our classroom. So I am very supportive of this because I want to make sure our kids can focus. But, you know, I don't want them, send them to college from a zero phone to now they're free fall and they haven't, you know, so that's that piece that I wanted to sort of bring up and it's not a discipline issue, but I'm glad to hear that. I do think it has become an issue in our classes and I'm glad we're looking at this. But that digital citizenship piece and those lessons and revising them, I think is an important piece moving forward to make sure our lessons are reflective of appropriate cell phone use, especially as we send them out in the world. Thank you, I don't need to go back.
Oh, okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Ismael Heiser. No go back for you.
Ms. Dernak Kofax.
So I have two areas I want to focus on and I'll just, I'll just keep following up on this one because this was one of the ones. I will say that when my kids were in school, this was the policy that we're going back to. And I'm glad to hear those two principals who are in my region and who I respect very much are, are saying that this is not a problem because it was a problem before and we relaxed the usage. And I think the devil may be in the details. We have to make sure it is not punitive. We have to make sure those cell phones, they used to be taken away, put in the principal's office and you couldn't get it away. That caused anxiety for students. That was not a good thing. If that cell phone needs to be, and we are all addicted. I mean, I left my house the other day, I was in New York City, I left it without, I left it in the hotel, I thought I was like freaking out, you know? I mean, unfortunately, that's where we are. And I don't know if I feel as strongly kind of what Ms. Ismael Heiser said about the high school. I, I feel like it's going to be such a culture shock. I, I guess, I, I like to see, Craig, I'm happy to see you saw a decrease in social media issues, I think that's important. But Dr. Grimm, have you, what have you seen? You, you, you've used it in the middle school, right? In your part of, the middle school part of your secondary school.
Yeah, I, I, we, it has been, knock some wood, it has been a smooth transition. You know, we, we have been, you know, very careful. We do take it, we do take it, if, you know, we coached the kids up. Now, when we, when we started in September and October, we coached them up. Hey, you know, if, if that phone's going to be out, we're going to have to take it. So we, at, at this point, I think the kids are pretty clearly, just, you know, about 1,000 7th and 8th graders, understand what the expectation is and they are away. Now, the one, the one thing that I did get from families was we initially said away, away in the locker. And the, the fam, and I did get some emails from parents saying, look, if we're in a lockdown situation or if we're in an emergency situation.
Exactly, it's the anxiety.
What we, so we kind of made the compromise where we bought sleeves for computer sleeves for the kids, because it's a bad idea to have kids just walk around with computers anyway. And we said that they could keep it away in their sleeve. The only issue that comes up there is that when, we do get a lot of bathroom passes, I think have to do more with the cell phone check than they do a biological issue. But, you know, we're, we're working through that and, and, and we're implementing e-hall pass, which is helping us track our, our, you know, how many times kids go in the bathroom. It doesn't follow them, but we can see someone's going to the bathroom 12 times. That's a good point of data for us to go ask, you know, that kid what's going on. But as far as, you know, when we do take it, we do take it for the day and the kid gets it back. And we, again, knock wood, we have had very, very little issues with it because they're not supposed to have it anyway. And they're not really supposed to be using it anyway. So it's, 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 it was a little bit different when you could use it at lunch or you could use it between the passing periods. I think that's where the anxiety came. And now that they know that they're really not supposed to have it at all, it, it seems to be going well in the first year.
Go ahead, sure.
The one game changer that I've noticed that where it started to really impact instruction and learning are the earbuds. So in the past, students didn't want their phone as much because they, you know, it's very obvious when wires, but if someone has a mask, they have their hair over it, they're not listening to the math teacher's instruction, they're listening to music. And that's where I think the away for the day, for me, has changed over the last couple years.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I'm still not 100% sold on the high school part. I just feel maybe it's a privilege when you get to high school, it's a maturity issue. So I can buy the middle school part, I'm not certain how I feel about that, I, I need to think about that further.
And Ms. Dernak Kofax, I just want to make sure to, just to clarify the difference. For high school, it's not proposed to be away for the day. The proposal for them for high school is before first bell, after last bell, during class change and during lunch. So they have a lot of access.
So they have more access.
To cell phones based on their developmental, yes ma'am.
Yeah, all right.
It's just during instruction and this is, go talk to 10 teachers, go talk to 100 teachers. This is today's reality and it is, it's a tension point though of trying.
It's a tension point because we had it, we had it this way.
We had it, I know.
And it did not work.
I know.
And then we relaxed the rules and here we are, full circle again. So we shall see. And I think, like you said, you described it perfectly, it's a tension pool, we'll see where we are. I do appreciate you pointing that out, Dr. Boyd, about the differences between high school, because I think there needs to be privileges given as you grow and develop and, and there needs to be learning moments.
And one last thing I just say to the board, because I know there's going to be, there'll be strong discussion, it sounds like, before you have your final vote. We're doing more and more out of this pandemic to take best practices. What Dr. Grimm is doing, it's not, well, Hayfield's doing it well. What is the best practice? And we make sure it's the fidelity of implementation. You all have said to me, we're trying to take that to heart, even as we do this SRNR. Dr. Boyd's been meeting with the principals. This is how we're going to do it. This is the structure to set up so that we do it the same way and we don't turn this into a major tug of war between kids. It's trying to respect the instructional climate that the teacher's trying to create in that, in that classroom.
And I do appreciate that, I just wanted to point out history. So, so I find, I want to end up, and I may need to go back, I want to end up also following up on what my colleague, Ms. Corbett Sanders, talked about, about on page 35, adding opioids, specifically adding those drugs in, in, in that section. I think that's important. And I do want to ask our principals, what do you think we need to do to engage parents more fully on the crisis we are seeing in some of our schools with opioids laced with fentanyl?
I don't know why everybody's looking at me.
That's a good question.
So I actually, to give my colleague to the left here some props, I, I, we did a parent outreach with our ATOD after seeing Craig's presentation that he did with his I think we just, you know, I think we got to do town halls, as crazy as it seems, and as much as I hate to go back to the Zoom town halls, we'll get 400, 500 people in a Zoom town hall, we'll get 12 people in person. You know, and so we had a freshman transition night and I just give this as an illustration. And we had a good number, I would say we had about 50 families at that, that transition. I guarantee you, if we would have done that as a Zoom, we would have had well over 300. So I, I think that's probably from our, our point of thinking, more often, not just PTSD, more town halls, get the ATOD folks, they have an incredible presentation that I think is very effective. And then, and just get, and I think being able to, be able to, to share with folks that, you know, it's not as, like, like, I forget who said it, it's not a school problem, it's a society problem. We are a microcosm of society. But when it does come in and it is coming in with younger kids and it is, it is scary. I mean, we, we have, I, we have colleagues who, people have been revived at school and they have been revived in ambulances at, at pretty young ages. So I, I just don't recall kids this young experimenting this much with this heavy of drugs. Marijuana and alcohol's always kind of been there, but in my 20 years, but this is, this is different and it really, it's scary. And it's, it's across, when I say colleagues, I mean, everybody in HSBA has had multiple, you know, I shouldn't say multiple issues. Everybody in HSBA has had an issue, so there's been multiple issues across the county.
And I, if I could just say that the variety and the, the speed at which the way students can access drugs is changing dramatically, much more than my 28 years of education. The edibles, the, the access to it from family members, the way you can, the more palatable that the drugs are right now. So it's really about getting to the families because a lot of the families don't understand what has changed in literally two years or three years. It's a whole new ballgame. And when you have a chance to talk to parents and families and these, our substance abuse specialists that are part of the schools, they're amazing. And once you start spreading that word, my PTSD, parents wanted to know, they wanted to know more and more. So keep doing those outreaches is what I would say.
So Dr. Boyd and Dr. Braybrand, how can we add this as a point for fidelity of implementation to ensure that schools are doing these things? How can we put that in as part of this, that we shall do this to ensure parents understand what can and is happening?
I think that my first thought would be is I think that as we're talking about changes to the SRNR, that we also include language about some of the 40-minute presentation to see the basketball team because they're, you know, a great basketball team. How can we do a? How can we include just some key points before tip off as folks are coming in because parents are there, family members, you know, even other kids that just might not know. And when you get that gummy, you don't, you think it is just a regular gummy, but you're actually, it has marijuana in it. So I think that we just have to be creative. I think certainly we will get some families who will, you know, certainly engage via those Zooms and things like that because they don't have to leave home and it's more conducive to our schedules. But I think we have to infuse it, these hot points into places where we know we're going to have that captive, engaged audience. So maybe the game starts at, you know, maybe we list it at 6:55 and we know it really doesn't start till 7:10 or 7:15. But just thinking things out of the side of the box, that's my first thought. I may be a little biased as an athlete, so.
No, I appreciate that and I look forward to maybe some revised language before we, and I'll be happy to work with whoever I need to, including Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Ms. Pakarski, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And thank you for all of this. Just want to share some feedback that I've heard, you know, particularly from teachers about how they're feeling that maybe there's a disconnect between what is happening in the schools and the hearings office. And, you know, they're feeling like, like kids with behaviors are getting kicked back, but they don't have the resources or the ability to, to be effective in helping them. So, you know, we talked a little bit about the professional development. There's a disconnect there, so, you know, maybe it's back from the pandemic, maybe it's a professional development, maybe it's resources, probably it's all of those things. But I did want to bring that here today because increasingly throughout the year, I've, I've heard that.
I just want to clarify my comment about the professional development. Some of it had to do with that intervention page and the way the schools were filling it out. Because for the appeal cases that were coming to the board, when we would call the school and ask what interventions had the school put into place, oftentimes there were many, many more interventions that had been implemented than were listed on that page. And they just hadn't completed it all. And we were like, well, why didn't you put it on there? Why weren't these things listed? And so sometimes there were disconnects there and so we think we need to go back and make sure that they're all encompassing. And sometimes there were some things missing. So just going back and really going over all that should be included, sometimes schools, especially for, say, example, a 7th grader that may be referred to the hearings office, schools weren't going back and connecting with the elementary school. There's a history there, right? And maybe the elementary school didn't have a complete record, but there was information that would have been helpful to the hearings office and to the, you know, others that were reading. So there's information like that, that we would want to include.
Yeah, thank you. And I mean, look, we did, you know, a massive revision and there are growing pains, so I understand that. But I think, you know, to honor all the things that have been said to me, I think we need to be talking about it and following up and refining. And I know we'll talk about it again next year and throughout the year, so thank you for that. You know, I'll talk a little bit about the cell phone policy, just as you know, Dr. Boyd, and for those who know me, will be kind of surprised with my, my thoughts on this. While I certainly, you know, you have the experience and, and have been going through this, I, I do have major concerns when we're putting this in the SRNR. And then when you look at the escalation of infractions, I mean, there are some serious consequences on there for a kid literally looking at their cell phone. You know, I think unfortunately, we let the genie out of the bottle, if you will, many years ago, when we were encouraging students to bring their cell phones. It became a culture. I know why, I understand it, but I think now trying to stuff it back in, across the district, I'm extremely worried that this is not realistic. I just don't think it's realistic. Coming back from the pandemic, the anxiety issues, teacher issues, teachers look at their cell phone throughout the day. So is that going to be a component now of professional development? Because if our teachers are checking, you know, our students, I mean, Because if our teachers are checking, you know, our students, I mean, they mirror behaviors. I just, where we are in society, and I understand all the issues and why, and the thinking behind it, I just don't think this is the fight that is going to get us the solutions we want to see. And I haven't spoken to anybody, this is totally me speaking. I look forward to talking to teachers and to parents and to my principals, but I do understand the desire to do something. I just have a lot of concerns that this is probably not where the battle is to be fought. So, you know, I don't know if you want to say anything, at least to the escalation of behaviors and the consequences, Dr. Boyd.
Would you like to be put on go back as well?
No, I think that gets to my concerns.
I think, I hear the concern, I think the collective concern from the board members that have spoken is that we don't want to turn, what is it? I was thinking of the molehill on the mountain analogy, but I can't get it straight, but something, thank you for that assistance. We don't want a small thing to become a big thing. And I think, you know, as our principals have taught, I think, excuse me, have said, I think that once we share the expectations, most students, even as we're looking at our data, discipline data now, even with the significant things that we have, as we look at the percentage of our kids, most of our kids are following, meeting school expectations, exceeding school expectations, even as we look at it now, and I think that sometimes that gets lost, because we're, and naturally so, we're trying to work on the group that's having some challenges. But I do believe that by and large, the majority of our kids will have no problem at all with this. And we also have to remember, it's the why we're doing it. We want to make sure that kids are available for instruction. I think we talked in some of our two-by-twos, not only about being available for instruction, but as we talk about life after school, the ability to engage socially, we all have to work with one another. And some of our kids, I shared an example with someone yesterday, when I took my daughter and her teammates to AAU, we're going to eat at restaurants, the adults were having discourse, were talking, laughing, things like this. You look at the table, my child included, so I guess I'm preaching to the own choir, necks like this. 10 teenage girls at a table, silent, not a word, because everybody's neck is down, phone and Twitter, Instagram, and their fingers go so fast, you know. Right, and we know that that's a part, but they also have to be able to, as we talk about self-advocates, self-advocacy, self-determination, the ability to have problem-solving skills, work with one another. Yes, it's minimizing the problems, but it's also teaching those fundamental life skills that, and again, it's just the evolution of where we are, and cell phones are great, but we still have to have the ability to engage. So I think in short, that I think the majority of our kids will have a, no problem at all. Where we see challenges, it's again, the professional development. If Martin refuses to give me his cell phone, I'm not going to make a big song and dance to Martin in class. I'll deal with that later, because I don't want it to get into, he's cussing at me, and then it gets this, I can follow up later and have that dialogue. So again, that goes to the professional development and not having a power struggle with children.
Thank you very much. Mr. Frisch, and then Ms. Tolan.
Thank you. First, I appreciate the changes in, on page 21 of the, 21 of the document, 22 of the, 22 of the document, BSC8A through D, where you've coupled the outing based on orientation, gender identity, and immigration status. I would note that previously, and in the definition of outing, it's not just restricted to gender identification, so that might need to be finessed with the language so that it sticks to the definition. And the inclusion of immigration status, I appreciate you adding that. As for phones, I worry about the impact of, you know, excessive cell phone use on our portrait of a graduate skills and our students' abilities, not only to communicate with each other, but with people they don't know. I think something that I've heard from many educators is how stunted a lot of students are from the pandemic, and, you know, this certainly doesn't help matters. So I wonder if, a couple of things. One, whether we should be spelling out that phones in restroom, you know, taking a phone during your restroom trip should be excluded as well. I know it doesn't fit into any of the categories where they're acceptable, but we should probably spell that out. I know educators who do not let their students take their cell phones to the restroom, and suddenly those students no longer have to go to the restroom. We should also at least have some discussion about talking through workarounds. I remember my first couple of months on the board when I was told that students couldn't access Netflix on their school-provided laptops, and like, I know they could, this, you know, it doesn't take much for one genius kid to figure it out, and then everybody knows, right? And then we hit them off at the pass, and they figure it out again. So they will be able to text message, they will be able to figure out workarounds to social media and all these other things on their school-provided laptops. So I think we need to have a conversation at some point about how we're going to continue to stay ahead of that curve, so that they are used for the purpose that they have them. The issue of headphones was brought up. How are we addressing that? Is that going to fall under the same category as the actual phone usage?
So I concur. The headphone piece, we haven't, we hadn't had a chance recently, at least in the groups that have been involved, and we haven't talked about those, you know, the AirPods. And I think Dr. Herring said earlier that many, you know, Ms. Cohen could have on AirPods right now, we wouldn't know, because she has a long, pretty hair now. She could be listening to music. So we will, we will look at that. And I think again, to Ms. Pakarski's point about the modeling, to make sure that staff aren't teaching with, with AirPods and, or whatever that might be as well. So I think that's key. You brought up a good piece that was in our discussion with our principals on yesterday, and again, that hadn't yet made it to the updated here, but there was advocacy from our principal group to specify restrooms and locker rooms in the draft acceptable use document that Dr. Anderson referred to earlier. It talks about where it's prohibited, but we, there was advocacy, and we're going to work with IT to include specifically locker rooms and restrooms, those private spaces, making sure that those things are prohibited. Certainly, we know if a kid has it in their clothes, I mean, you know, again, there'll be workarounds, I'm sure, that kids will figure out, but we want to make sure that we're sharing our expectations that phones are not being used, particularly the photographs and recordings in restrooms or locker rooms with that.
I think Craig, Craig and I were both in that, well, actually, all three of us were in that meeting, so. So I will tell you that we advocated very strongly, because sometimes parents will point out, and they'll say, well, it doesn't say that they can't have their phone out videotaping somebody in the bathroom. And, yeah, and, and I agree with that, however, it has created, you know, school disturbance, and we work through that. But, you know, and a huge shout out to IT, they've done a great job of being able to pull down some of these, thank you, these Instagram sites and that, where, you know, kids will, it's not nice, like what they, what they, what they're doing. And, and when they're doing it in the locker rooms and the bathrooms, it really doesn't make kids feel safe. So just thank you for bringing that up, because I think we, and I'll each represent their own level, HSBA is very, very, very strongly in support of being very specific about language around locker rooms and bathrooms.
Yes, I would agree with that, except mine hasn't really been electronics. Like I was telling Elaine, I had sixth graders who were vaping in the bathrooms, so bathrooms are always an issue, because that's unsupervised. So being as specific as we can, as parents try to find the wiggle room around it, will benefit all of us.
The good news is that EdSpecs will solve that problem in 40 years.
Yes, absolutely.
I might consider in talking to colleagues about a follow-on motion to request like a one-quarter check-in after the first quarter of this being the law of the land, letting us know how it's going and what kind of feedback we might be seeing. On the issue of fentanyl and other issues related to drugs, especially around the potency of THC, which is significantly stronger than when I was in high school, or when anybody in this room was in high school, you know, I will likely also bring a follow-on motion for a complete report out on all of our work. And I know we've added a lot of work in the last two years around drugs and alcohol use. So I want a lot more information there. I don't think we need a work session necessarily, but a report back from the superintendent is probably warranted, because I think there may be gaps based on what we now know.
Would you like a go back, Mr. Frisch?
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you to everyone who is here today. I hope my colleagues are hearing loud and clear, given that we're also working on the budget, the cry for professional development in so many of these different areas. And so, you know, this can easily soak up days of professional development time. Just want to make that point. Dr. Ivy, I appreciate you bringing it up, too. On cellphone use, I do want to give a shout out to, you know, Herndon Middle and Herndon High School, both of which have pretty much implemented how this is written, you know, number three on page 16. They did it recently, and in my discussion with, you know, Dr. Noto, just like a week ago, you know, it went very smoothly. You know, they piloted it with a team and tried it out, and went really well, the people were happy, so then they just did it school-wide. And as far as I know, it's been going pretty well. So we have two great examples right in Herndon that we can watch, and, you know, see how it's going even through this year. So, you know, I personally think, you know, having people put phones away during instructional periods is completely appropriate. So, and the teachers have the choice of, you know, whether they want to have the kids bring it out and to use for, you know, some part of that period. So I am happy to have that in there. I just wanted to maybe chat a little bit more with the principals that we have here. You know, finally enough with Ms. Pakarski, you know, I'm just hearing different places in schools, talking with teachers, principals, that, and kids, actually, teams of kids that, you know, as we've pointed out, you know, Dr. Boyd did a really good job pointing out, we're really not having the discussion here about all of the kids. It's actually a relatively small percentage of kids that, you know, get involved in these behaviors, whether it's vandalism, you know, fighting, violent behavior, or drug use. And our principals and our teachers, you know, are really, and our kids, you know, the huge percentage of kids that are not involved in this want to be safe when they're at school. So I guess my overall question is, you know, within the constraint of, you know, the SRNR that as we have it now, and some of the changes that, you know, minor changes we have put in here, I really applaud, I think you've got a, you know, a principal problem-solving group, you know, and, you know, I heard you guys met yesterday. I would just like to hear from you, like, what are some of the things you're doing that's helping? Are there things in the SRNR that are problematic for you? You know, I want to hear your viewpoints since you're, you're there on the forefront.
A couple of things on that. I want to thank this team, because they really did engage the principals, both at a smaller group and a larger group. And I feel like we were really heard when you look at the reflection of this. We are changing our approach to discipline in FCPS right now. It started a couple of years ago. That's hard for some of our staff and teachers to understand, but when you can sit down and give the why on why we're more intervention-focused than punitive-focused, they understand. And then really, taking time to listen to the individual struggles they might be having with a certain student or group of students. The other group that we haven't talked about are students themselves. My student council engaged in creating little quick promotional videos where they talked about bathrooms and how they want to feel safe in there, and how they want to clean and safe environment. And then those were shown to our students, and you could see a difference that day. And just continually having the students take the lead and their voice being heard on it being our community and our school to live in. So I encourage, and I know a lot of schools are doing that as well, get that student voice in there, it makes a big difference. One more thing is, another group, we had our custodians come on our morning announcements and spoke directly to the students and said how they want everyone to be safe, and it's their job, and they, how it breaks their heart when they see a bathroom that's wet and dirty and not appropriate for kids. So it's really leveraging our whole community.
I would just add, along with what Craig said, just Dr. Boyd and the rest of our team just asking us at the elementary level, because it looks different, about what's important to us. And we really talked about the need for more supports, and we talked with Gotham about this too, with technology, and our students just using technology a lot more and appropriately, and what we can do to support their learning around it with the acceptable use. And it's, it's more with school laptops than with cell phones during the school day, and how we're providing our teachers more support about how they're supposed to be supervising during those small group times as well.
So I'll kind of address hallway behavior. So, you know, it's been a very, it's been a big challenge for our, you know, really all of us, our teachers and our administrators and our, and our kids. You know, we, there's always been, in every school, anywhere in the country, there's a small group of kids that are going and struggling and whatever, and to every, to sometimes, some, some folks' shock, will turn around and curse at a teacher. There's, that's always been. What I would say is, when we came back from the pandemic, that group was much larger. Now, it's still not the majority of kids, I just want to be clear on that. But, you know, even if it's 10% of 31 or 3200, that's, that's a lot of kids. And when a teacher is just saying something along the lines of, hey, I need you all to get moving to class, and they either turn their back on them and just keep talking, or they curse them out, it really doesn't just impact the teachers, and it is, it's very demoralizing to the teachers. But I also think it has a pretty big impact on the other kids, because again, the vast majority of our kids, they do what we ask them to do, even if they don't like it, and they tell you, but they tell you in the ways that they're supposed to tell you. And, and I will, you know, I'll put myself out there. I had to close some bathrooms, and you can imagine Hayfield Secondary School, it's, you know, we got these little bathrooms here and there where there's, there's nobody within an appreciable location that could supervise that. I've never had to close bathrooms. And we've had problems in bathrooms before. But I, you know, we had to get and, to the point where we, we opened up. Now, I'm going to tell you, most of my bathrooms are open. With that being said, we have, most of my bathrooms are open. But what we did is, we were, where we had cameras, where we had sub-schools, where we had monitors. One of the things that's scaring me about next year is we're going to lose monitors. And I don't think there's a high school, or probably a middle school principal that will tell you that we have too many security staff. We don't have enough security. And so what has been nice is those monitors, being able to post those monitors into some places has made a big difference. And the response from my community and from my kids, for the most part, has been, thank you, the bathrooms are cleaner. I got on, I referenced biology versus, I basically just, I don't know why I even have to say this, but the only thing you should be in there is for biology needs. And so, now, with that being said, I will tell you, I feel like as the school year has gone on, kids have adjusted, it has gotten better. I am hopeful that next year, I think it's still going to be worse than it was pre-pandemic, but I think it's going to be better than this year. And I think we're going to get back to where we were, and maybe because of some of the things we're putting in, we'll be a little bit ahead of where we were in the past. But that is, that's, that's a real issue. And going back to the SRNR, I think we have to do some professional development around the, I'm sorry, I tell you.
Dr. Graham, that was your time.
I know, I know, I tell you how to go back. Just real, one quick thing, professional development for teachers, because what happens a lot of times is, teachers, as we are implementing the SRNR and we are being more restorative, sometimes teachers feel like we're not doing enough, and we got to retrain them a little bit, too, so that they understand, because we are doing a lot, and things are getting better. So I'll end on that happy note.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just say, I said to the, my fifth and sixth grade student team the other day, that hopefully if they're starting, and they're so concerned, and they've got the student voice then, and they keep it going forward, we'll eventually get there. I told them they had a big job to do at Longfellow, too, so.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. I will take my turn, and I think it looks as if that will be the last one before we break for lunch, and then we will have all of the go-backs after. Just a couple of things before I turn my attention into the, the regulation for information technology, just to give you a heads up, Ms. Gotham. I do want to lend my support to the cell phone policies, and as everybody else, I'm sorry, the new cell phone language. I do want to kind of echo what I've heard. I don't want this to become a place where that's all that our teachers are doing, but it sounds as if those of you who have dipped into that pool this year have some good tips in terms of how to make this workable. I've had many teachers, many substitutes, and I know we've been dying for substitutes to come into our schools, say, if only the schools had a policy around cell phones, then I would know what to do. And lo and behold, here it is. And as a parent of a seventh grader, I am happy to see that this is what he has. You know, we're that parent, we do make his phone a brick between the hours of, you know, that he's supposed to be in school, so this will not be a huge difference for him. I do want to say this piece, because I do want to say this piece because Dr. Boyd had mentioned it for consistency's sake about seventh graders. I'm just going to bring it to sixth graders. The middle schoolers who are at sixth grade will have more latitude than the sixth graders that are in elementary. I'm just pointing it out just so we have that conversation. But pivoting into the regulation, Ms. Agathum, I don't know if there's space up here for you to join us. Thank you for all of the changes that you have here, and I'm going to try to, yeah. I'm going to try to pick through a little bit some of these things that you have here and try to prioritize. On page nine, the new page nine, there's some significant language that is no longer part of the regulation under the old letter R, the new letter, the old letter N, the new letter R. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
So the language refers to a technology limitation we used to have historically, where you can only send a certain amount of messages. And we have removed that language from a staff perspective because there's mass communications going on. So the technology limitation is gone. The controls are still in place to make sure that nobody spams anybody with a whole bunch of email.
But people are, but different groups are able to still send messages to large groups of people. Because I was thinking, as on page 13, what came to mind are the associations and how they're engaged.
Yeah, anybody who's authorized to send messages to large groups of people will continue to be authorized to send messages to large groups of people.
Okay, I don't know if I see here that there's an authorization that would allow anybody to be able to do this. It just seems to read as if no one can.
Sure, thank, we can take that as a feedback and make sure we can adjust the language.
Okay, thank you. The other piece that here that I was curious about when it came to FCPS email accounts, some of our board committees, some of them have email accounts that are FCPS, some of them don't, the board advisory committees. So can we speak a little bit to maybe having some evergreen accounts for all of those committees? So it doesn't have to be, because, you know, Laura Jane is the president, is the chair this year, because we know it changes over so quickly. Maybe it's Chair of ACSD or Chair of, you know, Title I, et cetera. Because some of them have requested it, and I think the only ones who have it right now are TPAC.
Okay, yeah, I mean, generally, our email accounts are linked.
No, FPAC.
Email accounts are linked to staff, just from a cybersecurity perspective. Giving anonymous email accounts creates dissonance in how we manage information that comes through it. But we can think through and come up with maybe some solutions. May not be a policy per se, but just solutions to support those needs.
Okay, thank you. There's another piece that I wanted to ask you about, and I think I'm running out. Oh, the Need to Know Principle on page three, that's a new section. Can you give a little bit more information about that?
Yeah, this is the beginning from an acceptable use, but also extends into how we share information. I think some of us know that information oversharing has become a large challenge. Lot of our information is digital, which means that it is relatively easy for someone to accidentally, completely unintentionally, share information beyond where it should be. So we want to give the context, and we want to follow up with a lot of professional development, too, for our staff to say, if it's student data or if it's data related to something specific, you want to follow the Need to Know Principle instead of doing a share-all in certain situations.
And this aligns really nicely with the trust policy that we've been discussing, so thank you for that. That looks like it's my time, you're off of the hot seat for now. It is one, it is 12:54, so let's come back at 1:25, and then we will pick up with the go-bangs at that point, which will have to be limited, because we've had less time than I imagined that we were going to have. So we'll see then.
Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. We do not have quorum right now. (laughter) Folks, we're waiting for one more and then we can get started. It was the one that was made. Alright, folks, I think we have quorum now, so we're going to jump right in. If board members did not indicate that they wanted to go back, then I did not list them, but I think most people did. And the time is flying and we have some very in-depth questions for our principals. So in order to afford us a few more rounds, we're going to hit this one at 1:30, and we'll see what that affords us because we have an end time of 3 o'clock. But I'm excited because it's only April and we haven't, well, it's April 25th. We have about three weeks until this comes up for votes, so we'll have an opportunity to still engage with Dr. Boyd and her team about any outstanding questions. So if it does not get answered today, please follow up with her. And principals, we're also putting you on that timer of 1:30. So... I know y'all like to talk, I know how principals are. We're appreciated. So whether you want to do your own little timer, I know that the clerks have a time back there for you, but you do not have the visuals, so my apologies. Ms. Tolan, did you want to go back?
I do.
Okay, awesome. Alright, so we're going to rock and roll in the same order as when we started for the first round. So we will have Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders, followed by Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Okay, cellphone usage. One big concern that I continue to hear is that students with a variety of disabilities use their phones either, if you're diabetic, sometimes to help self-manage. If you're an AAC user who uses your phone to speak. Right now, as the section's written, I'm concerned about not allowing for those. And I don't think we can just put in IEP teams, because I know sometimes we like to default to that because that still doesn't cover kids with health and mental health pieces that may not have it in IEP but need it for anxiety management or any of that. So that's the feedback I've gotten on that one. I also agree with my colleagues, I have to say, in where we go into the chart in the document of consequences. I just, I really think we need to strike through the consequences that are level 3, 4. I'd really argue too. I mean, the idea to me that using your cellphone is on par with not being in the place that you're supposed to be in the building. I guess, you know, I would argue that I think we need to be careful. I am really worried about penalizing kids with cellphone usage, though I 100% agree with the assessment of how kids are using them inappropriately and how it's cutting out social interaction with kids. The other is, I'll send it to you, but accessibility, like under rights. The piece of the SRNR that says rights, I think we need to add accessibility. And there's three different sections where we enumerate in the digital citizenship stuff different responsibilities and rights, but we don't talk about accessibility. That's the best I could do, Dr. Anderson. I need like five more go-backs.
Okay, we will try to see if we can get you one more. Any feedback to Ms. Cohen's statements? Just for clarity, Ms. Cohen, the one regarding cellphone use, are you talking about the violation of the acceptable use policy? That, can you tell me which, and I think you said the page number, but I was taking notes, I apologize.
I'm trying to find it.
I think it's 20.
Yeah, in page 20, it says BS-013, Violation of School Board Policy Regarding the Possession or Use of Portable Communication Devices. And right now, it's up to a level 4 in theory, it's starred. 1 and 2 are X-ed as possible avenues, but then 3 and 4 are starred. I would just ask, as we do in some of our other policies, like BS-045, Failure to Be in One's Assigned Place on School Grounds. That is, you're only able to use a level 1 and a level 2. The boxes are blocked out for 3, 4, and 5 as not an acceptable... Yes.
Dr. Boyd, do you have clarity?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay, thank you, but you don't have any comments? Other comments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes, thank you very much. Following up on the cellphone use, I do think that it is a welcome addition to actually put in more details about cellphone use. I do like what Ms. Cohen has suggested on limiting the punitive nature of it. But I would actually suggest that we need to include in our social-emotional learning modules a key portion of them being cellphone use. Because it really is teaching the essential life skill of how to, when to use technology and when not to use technology. And so embedding it there would be important. Secondly, on the family engagement section in Section 6.5, if you freeze the number until they find it, okay, I've lost five seconds now. Folks, stop.
Pause the clock, please.
I've now lost nine.
Okay, let's please give her back nine seconds.
Okay, so it would be 54, or 55. There, perfect, stop it. The, stop the clock. Yeah.
Okay, the clock is stopped.
Because I'm asking folks to bring up 6.5, Section 6.5. On the screen, or in front of you, you don't have to. That is where we, now you can start it again. This is where we need to talk about the semi-annual training of parents and families. It should be a family engagement section, and it should include semi-annual training on key issues, emerging issues, such as drug use, such as social media and other issues as they come up. The third piece I wanted to talk about is disciplined data. I fought for five months to get disciplined data. I understand there were reasons behind it. But we really need to very systematically include updates of disciplined data on a quarterly basis with each school board member and the opportunity to have a deep data dialogue and discussion about how to use that data for better positive student outcomes. And so I think we need, I just wanted to put that in there. And finally, on that data, making sure that when people come to the hearings office, it shouldn't be opting in to get the packet. We automatically send the whole packet of materials to every family.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. Oh, I'm so sorry, staff, any response?
No, I think that we took the notes, but Ms. Corbett Sanders, if you have those comments, if you have them by chance written down, can you send those to us? I was trying to take notes as you were talking, but I want to make sure I didn't miss anything.
Regarding the family engagement piece and the cellphone?
Yes.
Okay, and what about the hearings office piece and provision of materials?
With regard to the provision of redacted packets, it takes a significant amount of time to provide, to go through those packets. Those packets are fairly large. So consideration should be given for additional staffing to redact those packets because an individual has to go through each and every one of those packets to make sure that confidential student information is not included for other students. And so it's not an automatic issuance of a packet. There is someone literally reading hundreds of pages, sometimes in one packet, before it can be sent out to a family.
So 70% of the families get a redacted packet?
Are you talking about the appeal packet or the discipline packet to the hearings office?
No, the appeal packet.
Okay, that's something different than what I'm referring to.
Yeah, no, it's, this board has asked for the appeal packet information to be sent to every family that has, that goes through the discipline process.
Yes, they do receive...
But you're saying that only 70%? I'm sorry, can I just dig into this a second?
Sure.
You said earlier, 70% of the families receive the appeal information.
Not the appeal packet, the student discipline packet. When a student is referred to the Division Superintendent for Disciplinary Action. Previously, in the principal's letter, as well as the hearings office's letter, we offered a copy of that packet that was submitted for the hearing officer to consider. Now, we offer it verbally and in writing. And so we receive to every family, and about 70% of the families who have a hearing before the hearing officer receives a copy of that packet. It's not on appeal. But when we do receive an appeal on a short-term suspension or appeal to the school board, those families do receive a copy of that packet.
I think that's a little bit different from the question that I asked previously. I'm going to put you on the go-back so we can tease that one out a little bit. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Yes, I just want to add to the comment regarding education for the community. I would like to make sure, and I thought I saw Ms. Lloyd here, that we're talking about to the community the importance of protecting instructional time. Right? I would hate for the community to get the impression that we're just handing out rules because we can, right? That that is the goal. So I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that and that we want to partner with parents and guardians in terms of creating a healthy culture so that instructional time is protected. I also want to go back to page 7. We talked a little bit about the difference between placement for the IEP purposes and school placement. And I would like to tease out a little bit the impact on certain students when a transition has to occur. I do think that that can have an impact on the child's ability to access education. And so I, not that we can solve it right now, but I do think while we're saying, you know, you have these things accessible irrespective of where you are, the fact that that child has to be moved is an impact. And are we taking that into account when we figure out what we can do? And what's appropriate? Let you finish chewing.
Thank you for that placeholder. So yes, and in our discussions with a couple of board members as we had two by twos, that has come up. We can certainly continue to partner with schools, regardless of whether the student has an IEP or is a student without an IEP. As they're going from one school to another, it is, it is the hope, and I'm sure that the principals can talk if they've had students to transition from their schools, and we can, again, reiterate that in professional development, the need to have those conversations and discussions as we go from one building to another. Certainly, as we talked about our common or universal referral system, there will be information captured there about history and interventions implemented. But sometimes there are those things that don't meet paper, right? Some of the things that may be critical in knowing how to support Stella, how to support Ricardi, those type of things, to have those conversations. And so that's something that's going to be important irrespective of whether the student has an IEP or not. And so my feedback about that piece is that that's not special or something that's isolated for our students that have IEPs. That's something that should be in the process for any student that's being administratively placed from one school assignment to another. So just sharing, just sharing that piece. And again, I know that folks are having a tough time grappling with this. And the pieces that we're trying to parse out is to really, to have those IEP teams to have discussions and to make decisions that are under their purview via special education regulations for the state and for IDEA, and to separate administrative processes that we may want to do as a division into something else and to look at that as we would for all students. So that's really the emphasis behind the proposed revision.
Okay, last 11 seconds. One, there are a couple of things in here that I didn't see definitions for, specifically with respect to disruptions. And then finally, there's a couple of things. One, on page 40, that talks about pending bills and how that will impact the SRNR, if we can highlight that. And there seems to be something coming along, at least I'm hearing, with respect to misdemeanors that have to be reported. I don't know if that, you know, where we are on that and if we can get a report on that as well. I tried.
We'll make sure that we bring forward that information. And thank you for highlighting that. And I apologize for not highlighting that in our introduction. As those, as that legislation changes, we will certainly bring that information forward. And we are still operating based on the feedback that the board provided on last year, whereby it's our intent to only report to law enforcement when it's required and to not include discretionary reporting. So I just wanted to share that we are governing ourselves accordingly as we process through that new legislation as well.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, though, you're exactly right. There is some stuff still going on down in the General Assembly. They're coming back for the veto session and tweaks to potential discipline policies. And we have time between now and when you all vote to bring you any updates and make you abreast. And I'll be sure I share it in a Monday letter if there's some major heads-up developments that happen. There is some discussion about bills that would take away some of the flexibility we've already provided. So we'll just have to keep monitoring it, and we'll definitely let you know before the vote.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Ms. O'Mech, followed by Mr. Fresh.
Okay, I want to make sure I elevate a couple of things. Number one, I am looking forward to the telemental health piece, as you know. Number two, I appreciated the comment on the middle school SOSAs. I think previously I had mentioned MTSS and I was referring to SOSAs. And I know Pranav has been an advocate for that, so I hope we can potentially see how that might be reflected in the budget. Three, I really like the family engagement piece. I think that probably should be also in conversation with the Office of School and Family Partnerships and figuring out how we might have workshops, et cetera, to speak to some of these issues more centrally so that schools are not kind of piecemealing it. And then four, in general with the hearings office, I know this has come up before, I don't have time to elaborate much, but on language issues. And when I say that, I mean literacy more generally even than just literally English and non-English speaking. Just understanding the process, knowing their rights, there needs to be more work there. And I am wondering, you know, could conversations happen with OCCR perhaps? I know they're trying to do a lot of good work when it comes to language improvements. Pause my time, three seconds. Go ahead.
Certainly, we take into consideration whether there are language barriers with families, not just because of second language considerations. We, on a regular basis, if parents have concerns, we walk them through the process. We do that more now than we have in the past, where we really in plain language explain what the process is. Oftentimes, hearing officers, including myself, will pick up the phone when we're issuing a letter to explain to a family where it's apparent that there are some issues with understanding to explain what the decision means and what their rights are to appeal if they do not agree with that decision. Certainly, we are open to engage with other departments to enhance or improve that process.
No, I appreciate what's been done. And I think there are some gaps where I would appreciate a follow-up conversation between the hearings office, OCCR, and the appropriate parties to ensure we're doing that, we're improving that. Finally, so on, when it comes to inconsistency around how we respond to student-on-student offenses, sometimes it's not even just student-on-student, discrimination of all sorts that happens across this division in every identity category you can imagine. You know, I know there's been originally conversations I had with Francisco Duran a while back around potentially setting up a structure like Title IX, where we take it seriously, we investigate, we have action items and response. Even if we're not legally bound, it's something that should matter just as much. And that carried...
I can put you on a go-back, but if you could wrap up your sentence?
Okay, people went over, but, yeah, yeah, no. So just, I'd like to, and then that carried forward with, you know, some conversation with Armando Perry, Lisa Williams, she's no longer here. I really want to see, this is my one ask for the SRNR this year. I want to see some actionable items, but I guess I'll explain it further in my next go-back.
Thank you. Mr. Fresh?
Thanks. Along the lines of how we communicate the rights of parents and their children in discipline matters, if we take a step back, I think the question we should be asking is, how would we communicate anything to parents outside of discipline if they weren't able to read it or easily understand it, right? I think that puts a different lens on it. What would you do to communicate? We have tremendous resources in our video in OCCR department. Why haven't we created videos in multiple languages that explain the process all the way through so that we can give somebody a YouTube link rather than just saying, "Here's a packet of information to read"? We get lots of packets. I don't think everybody on this board reads everything in a packet. I will speak for myself, yes. The other, one other question I had, my time is slipping past. On page 10, as I scroll to page 10, we shorten a window from two to four days in which they have the right to contact a regional assistant superintendent. What's the reason for shortening the window? Because I think...
First sentence, it says two.
Tick-tock. What?
Trying to, it's right now, it looks like in red on page 10, it has a 4 struck through and a 2 replacing that. But I think... But I think that that was a draft and a typo. I don't think that that is what's currently in place, but give me about 30 seconds to pull it up.
This is off of the board docs right now.
Yes, I know, yeah, I know what you're referring. Give me a few seconds now.
It's likely a typo because as the slides Dr. Boy went over at the very beginning, we're actually going the other way. We're extending the window from two days to four days. So there is more time, and we just need to make that correction before your vote.
That's on page 10. On page, thank you. On page eight, it says if these concerns are not addressed by the administration, then these other steps can be taken. What about families who feel that they worry about retaliation if they address these issues with administration? And so they'd like to have a different outlet for bringing their concerns forward.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. So the intent of putting that there, and we have it stated in a couple of places in the SRNR, that we want to emphasize the collaboration with the building and the family or the parent at the onset because those are the parties that know the details around what happened. And we want to have that as a first step. Certainly, if there's additional support needed, we're happy to do that. And again, it's just, you know, we might want to think about, what are some other things that we can do to build trust with families? Because we don't want families to feel like, or to assume that there's going to be that retaliation. Our schools want to work hand-in-hand with them. And so that was the point of putting that there, to first, share your concerns with your building leader. And if you feel like they haven't been resolved, we want to help out. So that was the thinking behind that insertion.
I think this is where fidelity of implementation comes in. And in a moment of time, I'm going to finish the sentence. Because, you know, this is only as good as the building is implementing these rights because it's under the rights of the students. I have an elementary school where a student, a trans student, was not treated the way that they should have been treated. And rather than being presented with our regulations for those students, which indicate a support team being impaneled, they were instead told about our FLE regulations and not told about the protections we have put in place for. And that's not to say that they were being kept it. It's just that we don't have fidelity of implementation. So having, knowing that more senior people in the organization are more likely to be aware of these regulations and what needs to happen, I think, I don't want to dissuade anybody from bringing anything to our attention, even if that means they're more comfortable bringing it to a higher level.
Thank you, Mr. Fresh. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, so just listening and talking to principals, a lot of what we're dealing with and what we're looking at in SRNR is related to, you know, student mental health. So I just wanted to throw a question out there, just thinking of it as we're moving through in the budget process as well. I'd like to maybe hear from our school-based leaders, how, as far as staffing, you know, what kinds of supports do you really, really need in your building to try to support these students that are having these difficulties? Will, you know, I'd like to, we have a big chunk of money in our budget for additional assistant principals, for example. Will that be helpful? How will that be helpful? What about psychologists? I, you know, I've heard we're losing some psychologists because of staffing. You know, I'd like to know more about that. You know, what do you really need to help these students?
I would say yes to all of that. Elaine, I really feel like, I feel like I don't have enough clinical support at my school. And so I'm utilizing the resources the county has given me, using my centrally-funded .5 Title I position to buy another counselor and then using school funds to pay for the rest because I really feel like in a school like mine, which you're familiar with, that's had so much trauma, I need more clinical support. So I know I'm not the only one. When I was at Fair Hill, I wouldn't have been able to maneuver like that because my overall budget wasn't the same like what I have now that I'm at a Title I school. And so I know commonly through elementary school principals, that's something that we've advocated for is more counselors and more clinical support at the elementary level. That would greatly, greatly help.
Thank you.
I would just say, you addressed APs specifically. APs are also a line of counseling for kids and often mentor kids. And so that's another support, which is why we're appreciative of the extra APs in the budget because that really helps kids too.
So, middle school SOSAs is a position that we, I know the MSPA has been advocating for for a number of years. I will say at the high school level, it has made a significant difference in our ability to address kids proactively. So that would be another source. And then, of course, and I think the school system's done a good job. A number of counselors were cut, but were put back in because of ratio numbers. And so that's appreciated much. Thank you.
You also mentioned monitors earlier.
Yes, monitors are very helpful in just helping us keep eyes in areas of the building that we can't with our limited security staff. That helps. And this sub-issue.
Yeah. Thank you. That was, I think, big overarching point I just wanted to bring up that we need to pay attention to.
Okay, thank you. I will take my turn at this point. I do want to go back to page six where we're talking about the engagement. As I shared with you during, I guess, the meeting managers when I had my opportunity to speak, I'm glad to hear that it was reiterated here in terms of the parent outreach. And thank you, Mr. Fresh, for kind of the really awesome way that you phrased it in terms of making sure that parents not just receive the information, but understand the information. I want to go to page 17. Section three, individual search, there's a big chunk that's been taken out. Can I be provided some more details as to why that piece has been omitted?
Dr. Anderson, are you referring to the drug test section that's been removed?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So we've removed that. We talked with our principals, again, our fabulous collaboration here. And we don't, number one, our schools don't have the materials for drug tests. And we don't routinely sample students for drug testing. We had consideration during our review process. There was consideration to remove the breathalyzer test. But following further dialogue with our principals, we made a determination to keep that back in as it's used to confirm the presence of a student having used alcohol whereby drugs, we know many drugs stay in your system for a while. So I could have done drugs last weekend and not necessarily today. And if there were drug tests, I would still be testing positive. That sounds COVID, but still have that positive drug test result. And so we wanted to make sure that we have some more cut and clear things whereby now the breathalyzer will be administered if there's a suspicion of use, of alcohol use, where that's done consistently. But removing the drug testing piece, number one, because it's something that's been written there but hasn't really been incorporated. And also to make sure that it's not done in one place and done in others. So that was the rationale for that.
Okay, thank you. Page 23, and the chart BESO2A, the treatment of assault of battery for K-6 students. I noticed that's changed at the level four. Again, I want to bring up that in three of my middle schools, our sixth graders are at the middle school. So I'm assuming, since you've identified this as K-6, those sixth-grade students will have a very different process than the seventh and eighth-grade students if they were to fall under this infraction.
Dr. Anderson, just for clarity, you're referring to BESO1A or BESO1? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry. BESO2A.
2A, I'm sorry, okay. So in BESO2A, you're referring to level four where it says four through six, is that correct?
Yes, and I said level three, my fault.
Oh, no worries, no worries. I was trying to catch up. So we, this, regardless of where the student's building level is, this is associated with their grade level. And so we're not saying elementary, middle, or high. We know that sometimes proves to be a precarious place. So sixth graders, whether they're at elementary school or whether they're at the middle school, they would fall under level four, whereby seventh graders through 12th graders would fall under level five.
Okay, and that's going to be clear to staff?
And we will make sure and we'll reiterate that in professional development. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Page 24, BESO7, new language, but there's nothing checked off under the levels.
So that one is like that because we have the different subcodes and the different subcodes have different levels. And so what we might want to do is, on the different levels, to black it out because we've done that in some other places, just so it doesn't look like we forgot to put the checkmark. So we'll correct that.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm flipping through my pages. Page 34, where you're talking about some of the discretion that school administrators have. I think I shared this with you during our conversation. I'm just really concerned here about the lack of consistency. I would not want for the discretion that is applied at one school building to not be applied at another school building, making it come across as a little bit capricious. So can you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, and we actually, there's some, there's going to be some additional language. There was some additional language added in B that wasn't in there during the first red line when you look at second or subsequent offenses. And the principal's ability to make a distinction between a two-day suspension or up to a five-day suspension, that the things that they'll be looking at are those multiple infractions. So it's Michelle's third or fourth time being under the influence or bringing drugs. That might be the rationale for giving me the five days, where this might be your second time where you might get the two days because you're in fraction two and I'm at infraction four or five. We realize that it's difficult to make some of these things black and white because there are some of those unique circumstances. And we actually, the same very things, and it's a good thing, the things that we're spending a lot of time talking about now are the exact same things that we spend a lot of time talking about in our principal groups and stakeholder groups. And so it's not a perfect solution, but we are in dialogue and having discussions around how we make it more consistent and still allowing some latitude because we can't write it to meet every single, you know, nuance that may be presented to us.
Okay, thank you. So I'll look forward to that additional language. And seeing that my time is up, I'll put myself on a go-back. And the round three go-backs, it looks like we're thinning out a little bit. So maybe we'll go back, Ms. Medejo or Laura, to two minutes instead of 90 seconds. We'll start with Ms. Cohen.
We were really going to get go-go backs, so.
He's there.
Go-go backs. I, one question that I had about availability for the printed copy of the SRNR. I know we've talked a lot about different copies of things. Just a suggestion, and the principals probably have better input on this than I do, but I do think, especially because we do see our kids who have disabilities more often involved in the disciplinary system, it might benefit us when folks meet for their first IEP of the year to give them a printed copy of the SRNR. Because I just don't think, now that it's online, we don't have a lot of parents that are, look at it. So just as, I just have often wondered, you know, can we require that in the student's first IEP that they get a printed copy of the SRNR every year?
Ms. Cohen, I know you asked for the principal's feedback. Is it okay if I give it some thought?
Absolutely.
I know the spirit of that is to ensure that persons are educated. My fear is that there may be an opposite perception, that the thought is that students with disabilities will misbehave and will violate the code of conduct. I liken it to, if we look at our data, we know that, and just being fully transparent, students with disabilities are disproportionately represented in our data. Our students who are Hispanic are disproportionately represented in our data. And our Black students are disproportionately represented in our data. But I would be remiss to say we want to give every Black parent, every Hispanic parent, every person. And again, I know the spirit in which we're coming from it is to make sure that persons are informed. But I just think that it may give a perception that we don't want to give. So that's just my thought about that. But I certainly give deference to the building leaders to share.
No, understood. And I think, you know, I guess my, I had so much heartburn when we went from a physical copy to online. I just, we lose so much, and I understand. I mean, look, I feel you, Deb. I totally agree. So maybe that would be more helpful to hear from the principals. Do you feel like there's a big difference in having a physical copy we give to families and just having it online?
I'll go real quick. In my experience with the SRNRs, nobody reads it until they're a kid. Yes, in a situation.
Represent that part.
Yeah, so, and, excuse me. So, so, you know, I do think having physical copies on hand, be able to hand it, be able to hand to folks, especially for the APs if they're starting to deal with a kid and maybe it's the first time that that student has. So I think there's some practices we could put in place. I'd go back to the IEP situation though. But as a parent of a child with an IEP, I would tell you I'd be very offended if I was handed a SRNR. And my, you know, one of my kids, maybe I might be able to see it, and the other one is like, the other one is absolutely not. So, but, yeah, but I do think having them on hand, especially for those conversations, that first conversation with the AP, maybe sending one home with a kid, a hard copy would be probably, maybe meet the goal for those that aren't accessing it.
Yeah, definitely. Certainly, as a fellow IEP parent, I will say, no offense intended with that. I just want to make sure that our families know what they're in for. But I love that idea. There's another question, page six, section seven. When it talks about summer school is a privilege, there doesn't seem to be language that discerns, is ESY considered summer school then? Or is this language separate and distinct? So do we need to put that caveat in there?
That is a great question. I think that's a great point. ESY is different, ESY. And, you know, we talk about, talk with families and even talk with staff. We always, I know we do the presentations and we talk, you know, because it happens in July, those type of things. But summer school and ESY are very different. And so we will look at how we incorporate that language. But thank you for bringing up that point.
Thanks. Another question that I have too, and I will, again, send you all of this. But in the language, it's always rubbed me a little bit the wrong way, our language about the pledge in the moment of silence. And I wonder if there's, if there's a place to instead say, "The Pledge of Allegiance in a Moment of Silence will be observed on a daily basis at each school at the direction of the principal. Students shall not be subjected to unfavorable comment or stigmatization for their decision to participate in or abstain from the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance or the observant of the one minute of silence." Just because when we start off with students at each school are expected to recite, I think we're flipping again that the expectation is that the school will provide that every day. We understand that students have a right to participate or not participate, but we as a school system will be providing that opportunity every day. Just in terms of how often we're trying to turn our language in the SRNR into more inclusive, was just a thought.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Corbett-Standers?
Yes, thank you. Three points. I want to unpack a little bit more this, the 70% getting a packet. Can you explain what they get, that 70%, and if we can stop my time?
Sure. When schools submit a referral to the division superintendent, the school submits a discipline packet, which includes information, a copy of the letter sent to the family, the memo, academic records, the detailed incident report, a list of, a summary of the interventions put in place, narratives from the teacher. If it's a student with a disability, it includes the special education documentation to include the educational, psychological, and the social case history. There are statements from witnesses to include possibly impact statements. And so that's the packet that's submitted to our office. And so when we schedule the hearing, the family, we're, we now ask every family whether they want to receive a copy of it. In times past, we only sent that in writing to families. And looking at how many families received it, we wanted to change our process so that all families have the opportunity to have access to that information. So we offer that to families, given our available staffing. It is a lot of work for staff to read through that entire packet, redact it, and submit it to the family prior to the hearing. So yes, we offer it to every single family. Approximately 70% of the families say yes, they want it. The other 30% say no, we don't need a copy of it. They are entitled to that information. And we remind them even after the hearing, during the hearing, that they're, they have the availability of a copy of this packet. When decisions are done on the written record, however- this packet. When decisions are done on the written record, however, every single family receives a copy of the redacted packet, whether they request it or not, because they are not before a hearing officer to hear the information that's shared. And so we make sure, for short-term suspension appeals and appeals before the board that are done on the written record, that they receive a copy, copy of the packet automatically.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification. I will tell you, I have grave concerns. And my concerns are that it is a due process concern. And if a child is being brought to the hearings office, then the due process should be that they are provided all of the materials that are being used to make a decision. And so I will be talking to my colleagues about, I, I know this isn't in the SRNR, but I, it may be a follow-on motion that we address this concern, because I do think it's a due process, and it's one that we should be willing to share what we're making decisions based on. Second piece, I wanted to talk a little bit about the forty-five days for alternative placement and how that works. Can somebody explain that to me, please? And if we can stop my clock.
We're seeking clarity. Are you referring specifically forty-five day placement for students with disabilities, or forty-five day placement from the hearing office? The latter?
Yes. So when a student engages in misconduct, does, that does not involve a statutory weapon, bringing a controlled substance to school, or serious bodily injury. The hearing officer, in reviewing the information, the detailed incident, and making, taking all that information into consideration, will only place at alternative school if they deem that to be an appropriate placement. Oftentimes, the hearing office is considering the least restrictive. Where can the student be successful? Is it likely that the student will continue to engage in that misconduct? It's not an automatic to an alternative school, but if it is a placement to an alternative school, students are placed for up to forty-five days. And so we do, oftentimes, it's simply a quarter. And if it doesn't include one of those circumstances, which poses a higher risk of safety to the school. So we're extending that time. The code change in that a removal of a student from a regular, a regular comprehensive school is considered a long-term suspension. And a long-term suspension cannot be more than forty-five days, unless it is one of those areas of criteria, statutory weapon, drugs, serious bodily injury, or aggravating circumstances, where they pose a unreasonable risk to the safety. It follows school-based interventions, and the student is not responsive to that. So our decisions are in line with that model guidance from the state.
Thank you. I would love to hear from our principals on this one, because my concern is the serious disruption to the educational environment and the panic that can ensue based on social media threats, which are not part of the list that you have elongated. So I would love to hear from our principals about this concept of forty-five days. And my other concern is moving students from one location to another, and if they are students that have disrupted the learning environment and may disrupt another learning environment, how does that impact our principals' ability to do their job?
So I think, at the school level, we're just sort of seeing this kind of change occurring. And so in my particular school, I have had some students who have returned after the forty-five days. And for me, I, I think the timing of the year seems to make a difference. If a student had an incident right at the beginning of the year, then, you know, forty-five days gets you through winter break, and I think that that usually allows for some separation. They, our alternative schools are amazing. They really help students with self-regulation. And I would say that this is appropriate for many of our students, if not almost all of them. Now, if there is a case, I think, I had one particular student where the student themselves and the parents even had a conversation with the administrator for the alternative school and said, "I know it's been forty-five days, but I don't think my student's ready." The student says, "I don't think I'm ready." They extended it a little bit longer. So it's, there are some things in place, so it's not just like an automatic. That's been my experience, and that's all I can kind of speak to it, unless my colleagues can.
Yeah, I, I would say, it's, it's so individual. I think where it becomes most problematic is when there's a victim still in the building. And, but that's something that the hearing office makes sure that, that we give that information. Like, if the, they specifically ask, is the victim still enrolled in the building? And so I, I don't know that there's a pat answer on that. I, I do feel like, my, my experience is similar to Craig's. We have a lot of, especially at the high school level, we have a lot of students that actually say, okay, at this point, it's a, a placement, or a personal placement choice, because they just do better in the smaller environment. But I, I think when it comes to the assaults, the very heavy-duty assaults, and anything to do with drug distribution, it can be problematic, because then, you know, we're doing that. But the hearing office does a very good job of communicating with us, and, and we communicate with the hearing officer if we have concerns around, if it's coming too soon.
So that's my concern. I don't think we should have a hard and fast forty-five day rule. And I don't know where I need to make a change to that, but I am very concerned about that hard and fast forty-five.
Could I follow up on that? Because it's not a hard and fast forty-five. You have those exceptions where the hearing officer makes a determination that, your example of a threat, a, a social media threat, the hearing officer, and, and I often have the conversation, when we do case reviews all the time, with hearing officers, if the hearing officer determines that there is an ongoing risk to the safety of other students, they are assigned to alternative schools longer than forty-five days. The forty-five days are for those exceptions where it doesn't rise to that risk to the safety of a student that they could. And the conversation is, if, if they're considering alternative school, there should be those aggravating circumstances. There should not be a placement unless you decide that there is a risk to the safety. Then you need to consider some of the interventions and consider a lesser restrictive placement from a student discipline standpoint, either another regular school, if, if there is a victim in the building, or return to school with the implementation of something like restorative justice, or some other intervention that could be successful to kind of deter the behavior from being ongoing.
So where in the SRNR does it have the forty-five days? Because the mental well-being of the kids who may be on a, be the subject of a social media threat is just as traumatic as a physical assault.
Absolutely. I, I'm, I'm not sure that SRNR addresses the VDOE model guidance. And we certainly do take that in consideration if we return to school. Our letters often restrict a student returning to the same school where the victim is, unless we, we consult with school principals all the time and ask their professional judgment, who will consult with families about the impact of a return to a school. And it's often restricted, where they are not allowed to return to the school where the victim attends.
I think Dr. Braybrand wanted to jump in.
Lisa, just one clarification. The forty-five days came from the state's model guidance. I think that's what you said earlier.
That's correct.
We didn't just pull that number out of anywhere. We, we pulled that from the state, and Lisa's saying it is flexible. We're not boxing ourselves in either way. If we need to go more, we can go more. If we want to go less, we can go less.
Correct.
So that would be the only thing. Maybe we should keep an eye on this issue of the social media and see how it's playing out in our hearing office. But, and maybe you know additional information. But again, we're following the state guidance, and then we're using our discretion at the hearing office to make sure we either go lower or higher based on the individual circumstance.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. We'll come back to this for you. Ms. Omech.
Thanks. Just, just on the due process piece, part of why I was talking about the data and cyclical evaluation earlier, is I, I'm almost concerned, not so much with the hearings office part, which has its own issues, but the school-level piece. I mean, we have far more cases of one-day, two-day suspension, et cetera, that we're not monitoring with the same level of detail as we do things that come to the hearings office or get appealed to the school board. So that's just something I want to put out there, far more in number. But going back to my one ask of the SRNR, so essentially, it's, you know, it's, when we make a commitment, and we say, we have these non-discrimination, you know, statements in, in SRNR, that students have a right to feel valued, respected, et cetera, in the school environment, we then have, obviously, the obligation to put in place the structural incentive systems and disincentive systems that will ensure that's the case, right? And with, I suppose, discrimination, that is, that requires such a high threshold in the law to actually be counted as an offense, or something for us to be concerned about as a system, a lot of things go without being properly addressed. Or we can say that, you know, we've done something and we move on. And we saw that in particular, I think, with two N-word cases last year, right, that led to some rethinking of how we do procedures and how we respond. So what I had been proposing from before, and again, was in conversation since Dr. Duran about, is looking at, the same way we do Title IX investigations, and the same way we take those cases seriously, can we put in place systems through conversations, I would imagine through the ombudsman's office, the equity team, and whatever, you know, teams do the Title IX investigations, to look at how we might have a parallel model for other cases of discrimination, so that we're not kind of, case by case, having to intervene, have the equity team look into it, maybe a school board member heard about the case, and that's why it got elevated, on and on and on. But can we put in place a structure that is delineated in the SRNR to protect those student rights that we're claiming they have? Want to hear a little bit? Yeah.
Well, first of all, as you said, we have a policy for non-discrimination. We have the SRNR that has the codes of conduct. I think you might be saying, when these situations happen, say with the N-word, some schools seem to be able to handle it well, others not as well. We've given guidance to our school administrators around use of racial hate speech and use of the N-word. We, we spent time on doing that with the leadership team, I want to say this past fall, and have provided, and again, the equity team's not here, but they've provided, through the equity specialists in each region, guidance, specific guidance on how to address those. So I think we have it. I think maybe you're saying, does that need to be in the SRNR? I, I don't know. But we've given them guidance. I don't want you to think that conversation with Dr. Duran.
No, no, you're right. We did develop guidance.
We developed specific guidance when those exact kind of cases are happening, because too many schools are like, what do I do? I don't know what to do. I don't know what to say. We've given them out guidance, and we could always have the equity team follow up with this board at a work session about it, or send some additional information.
Yeah. No, I think the next step from guidance would be an accountability mechanism, right, that we have a way where X school, there's an N-word. Another school, there's a kid who's being maliciously outed. Another school, I mean, God knows what. There, there are all kinds of identity-based discrimination situations that happen. But then centrally, what is our monitoring, investigation, and then follow-up? You know? If someone goes to the ombudsman today, they just get referred to resources, right? That's not a, a message as a system that we take that seriously, and we have protocols around that. It's different than a school knowing how to handle a situation, right?
Thank you, Ms. Omech.
I know, my time is way over.
Yeah.
This has been two years waiting, so.
So we'll come back to you. Let's let Ms. Kiesgahmara get in there.
Thank you. I, I wanted to look at the new category, where we're, we tried to break up in the elementary school, K through three, and then four through six. I think I understand the reasoning behind it, if you want to, you know, I don't know if you want to state that. But I will say that there have been those who've expressed.
Collecting our data. And certainly, we're able to extrapolate, you know, and, and filter by discipline codes, to look at what the codes were, and just filter for elementary, you know, this year versus in subsequent years. And, and certainly, Ms. Hunst, that can speak to this, but our elementary schools, generally speaking, are more reluctant to do referrals. And we've been, you know, and, and so we're trying, we're trying to find a happy medium, because they do, at the elementary level, tend to want to continue to educate, give grace. And so that's the positive side. The thing that sometimes is the unintended consequence is that, you know, Francis, looks like there hasn't been any concerns, there hasn't been any interventions, and because it's not in the system, but it's in this, it's in the spiral notebook in the, you know, the counselor's office. So there's some things there that, again, link back to Ms. Omech's statement about concerns about discrimination or those different pieces. So I think that, in short, we'll continue to monitor our data. We are continuing to have those discussions with principals. They're giving us feedback. And certainly, Ms. Hunst, if you want to add anything from that elementary perspective. But again, as you said, the, the rationale was really, there's certainly a different level of understanding, development, and impact also with some of the infractions, such as, you know, assaulting staff, you know, the understanding and ability and the impact of a kindergartner is a lot different from a fifth grader, in terms of understanding it, and also the impact of me hitting a teacher as a fifth grader. And I've shared with Flum, I've been the same size, minus ten or fifteen pounds. Since upper elementary, I grew early, so if I, you know, and I say that, you know, lightly, but just those, those distinctions with our age level. But Ms. Hunst, go ahead.
Yeah, me too. I would agree with everything Dr. Boyd said. There is a difference between the supports that we give and the grace that we give for K through three students than what we typically give through four through six students. However, we are finding that because of that grace that we've given K through third grade students, sometimes when we're talking about supports in four through six, we don't have that discipline history or that history of supports, because everybody kind of was like, oh, they're a kindergartner, they're still learning. Oh, they're a first grader, you know? And there's a pattern of behavior. So having a little bit more specificity to this will greatly help us.
Yeah, I, I just look forward to implementing this with fidelity, right, and making sure that people understand. I know that I've seen situations, say, there's a phrase in here, and I've lost it and don't have time to find it, but just talking about stalking, right? What does that mean, a kindergartner versus a high schooler? Some fifth graders, depending on their developmental age and understanding, may not, they may consider that trying to make a friend, whereas somebody feels like, oh, my God, they're following me, and, you know, I need to restrain in order. So that type, we're teaching along the way, is, is my point. So I just want to make sure that those things are clarified, that we're following what the impact is, and then making sure, as I said before, that we have those definitions. Like, there's the word disruption in here. What does that mean? And how do we follow through? But overall, I mean, I, I know that our administrators are actually trying to help our children grow with each of these incidents, and, and that's really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kiesgahmara. And I'll take my quick turn, since I don't see any other board members who are willing to speak on this round. Just going back to what we talked about earlier regarding lessons for drug prevention, is there still a program that is in our schools?
Go for it, Dr. Boyd. The yes is the answer.
Yes, we have our alcohol, tobacco, and other drug intervention program. And our SOSs do a great job in, in leading that support out of Deb Scott's office. So we have some supports there. We have been in collaboration with our principals, and are looking to see how we might be able to expand those supports for students who have more intense needs and partner with the community for some students who need more intervention beyond the level of support that can be provided by SOSs that are supporting the number of students that we have.
And there is at the elementary, and that begins at fifth grade? Or it happens in fifth grade?
There's, there's health curriculum. I won't try to, I'm gonna look at Noel, because I'm not gonna try to say which grades and what they cover, but there's a, a very robust health curriculum. And our SAPs do join in that effort as well.
I just wonder if there's space to revisit that, given, again, the robust conversation that we had earlier regarding the access of drugs to our students in ways that we did not have three, four, five years ago. Dr. Braybrand?
No, you know, listen, I drive, I've driven the same four miles to Gatehouse, basically, since I came here in 2009. And now I pass three or four vape shops, marijuana shops, coming straight down fifty. So I do think there's a way to talk about, as we start this coming year, and we already talked about in the SRNR semiannually, but really elevate to parents, accessibility has changed with the legalization of marijuana for adults, period. And even if it's not legal marijuana, and you gotta be twenty-one, there's all this synthetic, Delta H, THC, edibles, that basically you can get your hands on a lot s- Delta H, THC, edibles, that basically you can get your hands on, a lot simpler than it was even to get alcohol when I was a high school kid in Virginia and we were in the middle of grandfathering up Virginia from 18 to 21, the district being one of the last places to change the drinking age. So it is more serious what kids can have access to. And frankly, kids are escalating up the ladder of drugs to much more serious drugs now, much quicker than ever before. So I do think there's a place, and I think that's something I'll work on and talk to Dr. Reed about as we begin the next school year, that our parents really need to understand, it isn't like it was when they were in school. In fact, the accessibility is much, much higher because of a legal infrastructure. And frankly, it's only going to continue. Over the next two years, the General Assembly has already made it clear, they're not going back on any of the reforms that have been made. They are going to be setting up the full legal market for marijuana, and it is going to continue to have impacts on our students. So we'll have to look at that. I think those may be some future SRNR changes that we'll have to look forward to.
Well, I'll follow up with you, Ms. Scott, to get some additional information, because I may want to do a follow-on motion to this, or this. The other thing that I wanted to speak to that was brought up, when you were talking about the accreditation and the work on attendance. Now, students who are in isolation and who are paused, their attendance was excused, correct?
It was excused, but chronic absenteeism under the Virginia indicator is both excused and unexcused. But let me just, news flash, the news is that indicator will not be counted this year against schools for accreditation. And the state board just made that decision. That's for all school districts in Virginia, and it's welcome news. And again, part of it was the disproportionate impact of kids on quarantine and isolation. And so it will, but we'll still capture the data and we'll still share it with you in our data reviews in the fall when we're looking over all of our year-end data.
Thank you. And the last thing, I do want to say thank you to the approach to this SRNR. I appreciate the supports that are now included for our parents, particularly for the appeals going from two days to four days, because we have parents who want to do it, but they have not been able to meet the timeline. And also making those business days, I think it's even more integral than being caught up in a holiday or the weekend. So thank you for that. And that is it for me. And we have two more folks for go-backs, go-go-go-go-backs. Ms. Corbett-Sanders and then Ms. Omeche.
Just for the board to know, we have 30 minutes for elementary basal, and that's fine, but if you start earlier, we don't have a problem in case you want to ask a few more questions around elementary basal, but just FYI-
We would love to start earlier. So, last round, maybe?
Yes. And I apologize for being between us and the basal instruction materials. I would like to have the board have a plan on how, including the model guidance from the hearings office, because I know that there has been some concern about how students are placed and the timing, and also this whole 70% having access. So if you could provide us that, it would be greatly appreciated. I presume you have one?
I'm sorry, have one of?
Your guidance document for the hearings office. How do you take in hearings? How do you determine whether it is a actual hearing? How do you determine if it's 45 days of alternative placement? Or choose to place at another base school? What is the model guidance from the state that influences how you're making these decisions? I just think it would be very helpful for this board to better understand that process.
Certainly. Some of that information is memorialized, some is not, but I will provide everything that we have.
Thank you. That's great. And I don't know if we'll need a work session on it. Secondly, just want to briefly address the conversation about monitors and the concerns of our staff about losing monitors. We were told, we were under the impression that the ESER funds could continue to be used and you could use those funds for monitors. Is that not happening? Principals, please.
Dr. Braybrand?
Somebody?
Well, I'm going to let the principals go because you asked them, and then I'll tell you what I'm going to tell you.
It's not a trick question.
Oh, I don't know if I should have pushed this button or not. So my understanding is that the monitors were not moving forward in the, because there was the two different CARES Act. There was CARES I, which was what the monitors were paid out of, and most of us have gone through that. And as you all know, the feds gave a lot more latitude in that. Where the ESER III, they, the feds gave so many conditions on it that it's much tighter. So that's my understanding. It's not that they don't want to, but that funding pool is no longer available.
My understanding is that we can hire monitors but not use them in the way that maybe we've been using them in the past, that you could use monitors to help with a class so that the teacher could do interventions. I'm kind of looking at Sloan a little bit over here. He might have a better answer than I do, rather than just, you know, hallway monitors or bathroom monitors or things like that.
Oh, I see.
I'm going to let Dr. Braybrand go. All right.
Go for it. Go for Dr. Presidio.
This is very peculiar.
Well, no, no. Clearly, clearly, there's still some confusion on this. So the principals definitely are not wrong. Just a little point of clarification, though. Monitors were not included in the FY23 ESER budget, okay? So the idea was to phase those positions out as we reopen schools and relaxed our health mitigation strategies and didn't need as much support. And I'm not saying that we don't still have a level of need of support. So those were not built into the FY23 ESER budget. We did have some conversations about trying to figure out how we might be able to be a little bit more flexible in the use of some of our funding in FY23. And that was prior to the board taking action to have us reallocate $12.5 million from the ESER budget to cover summer school. So we're still working on what that final budget allocation is going to look like. The financial services department is still working on where that $12.5 million will come from out of the ESER budget. So it's yet to really kind of be finalized what the final position will be. There is flexibility, as Dr. Herring said, that was not available last year for schools to hire out of their ESER funds allocation at the school level, intervention and support, FTE, in a way that would provide them with some of those additional supports. So we're still trying to finalize things. And Dr. Braybrand, I don't know if you have any clarification to add?
Just a couple of final nuggets, actually even bigger picture. There's still, we pulled the monitor accounts, there's still X million dollars, I think it's four, four million in those monitor accounts. So schools still have monitor money that they can spend. I want to remind the board, we're not to the budget yet. I talked about one of the things I wanted to do was really create equity around elementary planning time and professional development time. So I want to say, stay tuned, and that would be using resources to have recess monitors who could cover recess in elementary, so that we can have the professional development time and planning time that elementary teachers need. So I have a plan that we'll be, of course, bringing to the budget work session, working with Karen Corbett-Sanders and Elaine Tolan, and then, of course, bringing to all of you at the work session. And I think you'll see a monitor plan that will really be a game changer for elementary school. And then, as Sloan said, we can work on some of the final details about any additional flexibility that we can provide principals around monitors. Just a reminder, we did share with principals for ESER that they could use ESER funds to create a full-time support person for elementary, I mean, for reading, a support resource teacher for mathematics, and to have a counselor focused on intervention. So those things have been communicated as well. Thanks.
Ms. Tolan has a budget comment that's associated with this question. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify and tell me if I had the wrong impression. I felt that the follow-on motion that we had around the $12.5 million really came, there was a concern that a lot of the ESER funding had not been spent at this point in time. However, if the ESER funding was going to be spent completely, we were not looking to just pull the $12.5 million out of ESER funding. You know, there was a lot of leeway in that follow-on motion.
Go for it, Dr. Presidio, because frankly, you're going to be here to deal with the piece of that. So let's get clarification on that and what we think and you all think.
I'm not planning on going anywhere. No. And that's why I said, financial services is still working through what the anticipated carryover amounts will be. And once they have that final determination, we'll be able to make some of those decisions, which will help us inform what may or may not be available for some of the things like monitors. So it's still kind of a moving target at this point, unfortunately. But they're working on it.
So Ms. Tolan, it's my understanding that the language said "up to" and was not inclusive "of," and that the other piece of that is that the ESER dollars by the federal government does give flexibility in how that money is to be spent. And so I think that we need to be very clear in our communications that if that money needs to be used to ensure the safety, security, and successful school climate for all of our students, then that's what we should be focusing on, is using those ESER funds to address social, emotional well-being as well as academic success. And that's what the ESER funds are there for.
Thank you for those additional three seconds. Ms. Omeche?
Yeah, I mean, I left off kind of speaking with my time, so I just wanted to maybe start with staff reactions, thoughts around feasibility of implementing something like this. It originally was going to be a forum, and I know it was drafted over a year ago, and that's part of the back and forth that happened with Armando Perry and Lisa Williams at the time. But this is also an opportunity to do that.
Dr. Boyd, Dr. Braybrand, would you like to respond to Ms. Omeche's idea?
Well, Ms. Omeche, I think I need to take this one back to the team about, creating a whole nother Title IX structure is actually, I'm not sure, we didn't want to create a whole nother Title IX structure. The federal government made us do it, and then we had to go through all that with the board. I think what I hear you saying is, you want to know what happens when an act of racism or the N-word or just discrimination happens, and how are we following up to hold schools accountable? What mechanism is it to do it? Like pulling SRNR data, or how can you find it going through the SRNR?
Yeah, sorry.
Right? More than just a legal structure, right? Is that what you're just saying? How do we follow up on schools when they have these hate incidents?
Yeah, yeah.
How are schools doing with it?
But there needs to be an accountability mechanism. So I'm not actually referring to Title IX as we now know it.
I see.
Yeah, this was conversation at the time when it was pre. But the idea is that an incident would trigger an investigation, there is a procedure for an investigation, and then there are tangible follow-up steps, whether that be recommendation for professional development, whether that be discussions around employment, I mean, if it's built up, or, you know, certain school interventions, whatever that might be, but that it's systematic and that there's protocol around it, not case by case because of certain, you know, incidents that get more attention than others, et cetera.
Yeah. We've definitely created protocol to give consistent guidance to schools when the incidents happen. I think what you're asking is, what's next to be able to report back? What's that look like across schools? It's not specifically in the SRNR right now, and maybe that's something we'll need to look at.
But the guidance lives in the school level, right? We're not talking about a system, a central office level, investigation protocol, follow-up.
So I think we may be talking about a couple of things. So with any discipline infraction or alleged infraction, there's supposed to be an investigation to determine the facts of the event, to get due process, to hear from both sides, et cetera. So there's a level of investigation overall. We do have a way to disaggregate the data. We have RB9 that breaks it out, A through E or F going on, so we can see, we would be able to pull data at the division level to say, how many times are there racial slurs, actual or perceived? We can pull the data for RB9A to get that. We could disaggregate that. Hey, if there's really an issue that's happening really, really significant at Candace's school, what beyond tier one do we need to do to really work with the students at the school, bringing in the families, all of those things? And so I think that, I'm not sure that there's, we certainly don't want to give the impression that there's not an investigation or that we're not taking it seriously. I think that it's a bigger piece around just folks being comfortable with addressing what some may consider controversial issues, soft, you know, more challenging things. Folks may be more comfortable addressing a fight versus, you call it Michelle the N-word. What then you, what do you then do? So I don't know that it's a process piece. I think it's an ongoing professional development for staff, but also education for our community. So that, I just don't know that putting something, even if we were to put something in the SRNR in black and white, that that would address the issue. So that's just some of my initial thoughts.
Maybe, Ms. Omeche, one of the things we could do, I've got two months, but Dr. King, as you know, is here. I know you had the original conversation with Dr. Duran, and let's-
Williams.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And let's let you see what we've done. We'll share with the board, too, what we've created, and see how we need to move forward in providing support. But we've provided a lot more support to schools. And then, yes, schools are required to enter that into SRNR, to do the disposition codes, and we follow up on what the consequences are. And what you're wanting to know is, well, are there patterns in a specific school or a specific region against a specific group of people? That's what I think I hear you saying.
Yeah, I mean, it's beyond racial slurs. It's, I mean, now when we're talking about discrimi, do we track cases of discrimination? We don't track that.
We have a number of items that are articulated, and that was one of the reasons we wanted to break out the larger code under RB9, so that we would be able to see, so we would be able to see what are things that are happening as a result of regarding gender identity, you know, malicious outing, the dead naming. We have those things broken out specifically with our internal or our local subcodes, so that we would be able to see specifically what it is, as opposed to going with the overall state code, where it would just be a bucket of numbers, and we don't know which of the 10 things in this large state code it is. Because we know that some of these things are new in our SRNR, some of these things are happening more prevalently, and we want to be able to pinpoint what's happening so that we can respond accordingly. And certainly, as you've mentioned, and as Dr. Braybrand has mentioned, it's something that we wouldn't do in isolation, certainly, you know, working with our equity team and our, you know, family engagement, all of those folks really needing to get together because it's bigger than just a school piece.
Right. But, I mean, to me, this still, what happens when it's broader than this? What happens when it is potentially repeated bullying for identity-based issues and someone's complaining about it, and all we can do is say, I'm sorry, here's some emotional support, if even? And there's not an investigation procedure, or there's not some kind of, again, kind of systematic way of handling these cases that are broader than something we can identify here? We're saying slurs is a very tangible thing. Did someone say a certain word? Did somebody out somebody? Can that be traced and is there evidence to prove it? Which, by the way, is already a high threshold, but, so that's one bucket, but this is a much broader area of concern. I mean, you all know this. How do you prove racism? Like, that, there are, you know, nine out of 10 are not going to be proven, right?
So maybe we can talk more offline, so we can get into more of the nuances and details, and we can talk more offline, and that can kind of help us to be able to kind of figure out what exactly you're looking for, so we can see how that might work. But I know that might take a lot of back and forth, and so I just want to be respectful of time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think that's Ms. Omeche's time, and that was just what I was going to recommend as well for some offline conversations. So thank you, Dr. Boyd. We are at the end of our time with you, so thank you, Dr. Boyd, and the entire team, the principals who've come to spend all of these hours with us and to share their insights. We're very appreciative of all of you. So thank you, and have a great day. And Dr. Presidio, do you want to come and jump into the hot seat, you and company?
We'll take, we'll take five minutes, so we can start earlier and get out earlier. So 2:56. Literally five minutes, folks.
All right, folks, we are ready to get started, so say your goodbyes, and come on back. Please stop eating your loud snacks, and just come on. Quiet snacks only. Quiet snacks only. Okay, Dr. Ivy, Mr. Tyson, Dr. Boyd, do I need to walk over there? I will walk over there if I have to. It is time. That's right. Get you into submission. Dr. Presidio, you get no big introduction from us, because we're waiting with this with bated breath, so go.
We will go ahead and get started. I know Dr. Graham is saying goodbye. We appreciate him being here with us, obviously, and just very briefly, I want to say thank you to our board chair and vice chair for scheduling this work session. As you'll recall, we had the agenda item on for our last board meeting, which we had to pull, because it was such a long evening. And at this coming Thursday's board meeting on the consent agenda, we have the adoption of our Language Arts elementary basal materials. So this is a really, really big decision for the school division. I'll remind everyone that we haven't adopted Language Arts basal materials at the elementary level in 20 years, and as a result of the large investment in the importance of this decision, we are bringing forward a limited adoption at this time, a recommendation for a limited adoption, and that's what the board will be voting on on Thursday. So I'm going to go ahead and turn the presentation, brief presentation, over to Dr. McConnell, who is our Elementary Language Arts Coordinator, and Ms. Klemeko, who is, of course, our Assistant Superintendent for Instructional Services.
Thank you, and good afternoon, and I am just incredibly appreciative that the time was carved out to have us just kind of bring you the high level today and the opportunity to answer some questions. I'm going to do a little bit, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. McConnell to give you the lowdown on what we are recommending and what this means for the future. So just as a reminder, and some context for this decision, we are on a path to achieving equitable access to literacy for all our students. You can probably think back to November, or October, when we sat here and we had a school board work session with Dr. Solari. Dr. McConnell was just in her first few weeks in FCPS, and we really talked about the data and the need to make some significant changes to our approach to literacy. And, you know, we've been very appreciative of the board's support, the board questions, as we've started to really move in this direction. And those three big circles up on the screen really just represent a little bit in a short form of our why, really looking at our student outcome data and recognizing that we needed to make some changes. We needed to have different outcomes for students, because we know that the ability to read and to write, to communicate, is critical for the success for the future. We wanted to ensure that as the whole world was looking at evidence-based reading practices, that FCPS wasn't holding on tight to what we've been doing for a really long time, and doing it well, and that we were really looking at our practices and seeing what significant changes were needed based on evidence. And that has been, that is something that is happening not only here in Fairfax, but it's happening in the state, it's happening across the nation. Every weekend, there are podcasts and articles, and, I mean, it's a definite movement. So what you see on here is our, sort of our mission statement or our vision for our equitable access work. It has been a great year of, I will say, of challenge, a great year of success, as we've really tried to move forward. You remember, we're doing some short-term improvements in our K2 with some phonics instruction, and to see the growth that we've seen in people's knowledge and people's skills and people's attitudes around this has been, has been great. We still have a lot of work to do on the equitable access to literacy work, and we'll look forward to talking about that in the future. I just bring this up as context, because this is obviously a big, a big part of this basal adoption. We were looking to adopt before the pandemic, and we went on hold. As Dr. Presidio mentioned, we have not adopted any Elementary Language Arts basal materials since the year 2000. It's a really long time. Now, that doesn't mean our teachers haven't had quality materials. They've had planning and pacing guides, they've had, they've had books, they've had other sort of databases and things. They've had a lot of different resources, but they haven't had that, that sort of basal resource that was purchased centrally and available at every school. So this was a really big endeavor, and we were really looking at this time where we're making this change to our reading instruction to ensure that we were aligned to the Virginia Standards of Learning, sorry, aligned to the Virginia Standards of Learning, aligned to the science of reading, and of course, aligned to our FCPS portrait of a graduate. There's a lot happening in our classrooms that we don't want to let go of as we, as we move forward. But those are our three big buckets as we were looking at materials. You may remember that we released an RFP last July, or I'm sorry, yeah, it was July, and went through that process, and at the end of the process, we were about to start the committee and decided we really didn't have enough materials, that there wasn't enough variety. So we quickly worked to rewrite, to rewrite the requirements and really entice others to come forward. We did have some additional, but in the end, we didn't really end up with as many as we would have liked, but we really needed to move forward. So we moved forward with the committee that met in, from February and March. We also had public comment period. So taking, oops. Okay, well, that's all right. As we moved into this, everything that came out of the RFP was in three categories. Core materials, kind of think of that as your Tier 1 materials. Your supplemental, things that aren't used every day, and, but are there as a supplement. And then finally, intervention resources. And those are incredibly important, because last year, the state passed a bill to ensure that any intervention materials we use are aligned to the science of reading. So this whole plethora of things were reviewed first by the community, and our committee review process is part by regulation. It's 30 days. We put the materials on display at Willow Oaks, as well as have things available online. Typically during those times, we get public comments of 20 or less people, and you can see here that we had over 300 submissions. So there, that just tells you the high interest, right? There was a lot of interest in this, in this adoption. One, because we haven't had this kind of resource in a long time, and two, because of the changes that we've been proposing. There were overall concerns of, I think some of it is just the difference between not having a basal resource and having one, right? That things are more scripted, things are laid out more structured, and where's the, where's the choice for teachers? Where's the choice for students? So there was definitely some current, some concerns. There were definitely questions about cultural responsiveness. I'm proud to say that Fairfax County Public Schools is probably out in front of most of the country in looking at our materials for cultural responsiveness. So it's pretty hard to live up to the standards when we have our equity team looking at things and all of the different people really engaged in that process. It makes it a challenge, but it's also something to be proud of. And then looking at the alignment to the science of reading, even within, if something's aligned, somebody could say it was, there's a, some people are looking for very strict alignment, and others are like, a little bit goes a long way. So, so those kinds of things are a little bit hard to parse out. But there were positives. We did get positive feedback that this is the kind of support that teachers need. They need more specific guidance, something that's a little bit, that will create some coherence across our schools, and feedback about user-friendliness. So those were some of the comments that we got, which really weren't significantly different than the committee. You all put forward committee representatives to attend the meetings, and we did meet, we met five times virtually, which was challenging, but people were so attentive, right? They showed up, and we had vendors each time, and they went into small groups to discuss and to really provide then feedback on each of the, each of the materials. At the end, or nearing the end of that process, it became clear, we needed to get people in a room with the materials, talking to each other. This was such a huge purchase, not only in dollars, but just in the amount of time and investment for our teachers and our students moving forward. So we did have one face-to-face meeting where our two core vendors came together, and teachers were able to really not sit through a presentation that was staged, but ask real, authentic questions and really understand the materials more. And then we did a vote, and as per regulation, it's really around majority, like what does the majority like? So looking at those lists that came forward, you can see that at K2, the preferred, the preferred resource was Benchmark Advance at a 61% support rate. When we first started voting, we said nothing, advance or amplify, and then we just took it down to the two. And you can see at 3.6, Benchmark Advance was also the preferred basal. Then in the supplementals, we had the two, the Newzella, which had an 80% approval, that was probably the favorite, and then No Write Inc., which is an online writing program that is very successful and popular in our middle and high schools, did not have a huge level of support there. Not bad, but not huge. And then looking at the interventions, the two that came out on top were Benchmark Phonics and Lexia 5 Power Up. So looking at those, I just want to mention for a second that we went through this process with all intention to purchase, right? Like, we needed to move forward, we wanted to move forward, we went through it twice, and as we were in the midst of this process, things became clear at the state level through the Virginia Literacy Act, that they were going to be giving us a list of materials. And that list of materials was going to have approved materials that we should be using, especially at the primary grades, but in general, they were going to be giving us this list. Now, we do know that if we picked something else, we could have put it through a process to get it approved, but we also felt like we might be missing out a little bit, right? They're going to have a list that's broader than the things that we looked at. And so waiting, which we're hoping the list comes out soon, but they've promised it by summer, it could come sooner, gives us the opportunity not to enter into an RFP process, but to invite those vendors and then hold a new committee. So I just want to be clear that we went into this with the intent to purchase, but pausing has some benefits, I think, for all of us. So I'm going to let, oh, well, I just kind of talked through this a little bit. Sorry, I was ready for this last week. It seems like it was a lifetime ago. But this Virginia Literacy Act, as I was just mentioning, I think I went through that. But I want to let you know that based on this, our recommendation is just to go with the two, right? Not to go with Benchmark, the core material, because of the list coming out. We do think moving forward with these two products allows us to keep the work moving forward, because we don't want to signal that we're not moving forward with our change into approach, but we do, and we want to continue to provide some information to, provide some information and things for teachers to continue to grow their practice. I'm going to ask Dr. McConnell to talk a little bit about the two things we are recommending for your approval tomorrow night.
Thanks, and thanks for welcoming me back into this space with you all today. So one of the staff recommendations is Newzella Language Arts, and so what Newzella Language Arts will help us do as a supplemental reading resource for grades three through six is to provide us with them authentic, accessible text at a large range of ability levels that we can really differentiate our literacy instruction for our older students. So not only does it offer articles that will support literacy instruction, but it also does offer resources that will support us as we think about integration with our content areas, and then, of course, help as well. It offers a dashboard, so there's an ability to really have our finger on the pulse of student reading activity. We know how important engagement is at the upper level, so this really gives us some data to speak to the student engagement part that we know is so critical. And it will align with the work, or with the curriculum that's currently in place, but what it will also do is bridge us, as we move forward, to thinking about how we'll intentionally and strategically build knowledge as a part of our Language Arts curriculum. The second resource, which we approved in the intervention category, is Lexia Core 5 and Power Up. So that hyphen is there, because Lexia Core 5 is the kindergarten through fifth grade resource, and then Power Up is the resource that would be utilized at sixth grade. And Lexia is an adaptive blended learning software that really provides structured literacy instruction to all students, and that's students who perhaps are still working towards grade level, and then because it's of its adaptive nature, also provides structured literacy instruction to students who we would consider an advanced reader. Something that I think's important around Lexia and Core 5 and Power Up to note is that it really allows us a consistent metric when we think about looking at data. So it obviously provides us with some usage data, but more importantly, it gives us some sense across the division around outcome data as well as growth metrics. So it's another consistent measure that we can use. It provides real-time data, so it will help teachers drive their instructional practice, and I think important to note, it is a blended learning model. So there is a student software engagement side, and there is also face-to-face instruction. And this program really is helpful in tiers one, two, and three, so it has a lot of utility, not only across the grade levels, but also as we think about the different tiers of instruction. And then last but not least, as Noel mentioned, we really think deferring a purchase of core resource is the best interest of the division until we see what's on the VDOE list. And just, you know, to piggyback on what Noel said, we have an unwavering commitment to this shift, and we think pausing and looking for the resource that's going to be that right fit. It's tightly aligned with the science of reading, and it supports the work that we're doing with equitable instructional practices is really the best move, and became one of our recommendations. So you're probably thinking to yourself, well, what does that mean moving forward if we were anticipating a core resource and we're not going to move forward at this moment with that adoption of core materials? So we have some things in mind. So one of the things that we'll target is to enhance and deepen our work around K2. So as Noel alluded to at the beginning of the presentation, that was really the center of our work in elementary language. that was really the center of our work in elementary language arts this year. So we'll be taking that work a step further. We'll be really looking at how do we navigate, organize, and structure small group differentiated reading instruction? And how do we fold in decodable text to give students that practice that we know is so essential when we're looking for mastery of those phonetic principles that will get us to skilled reading? We'll also be looking at 3-6. So K2 is a focus, but we know we have to shift our work in 3-6 as well. So we'll be looking to stand up some 3-6 word study resources. There were already some in existence within the planning and pacing guides, but we wanted to build those out for teachers so that they had a more day-to-day consistent way to make sure that we're also thinking about how those more advanced phonetic principles and morphology and vocabulary is addressed in those upper grade levels. And this extra time gives us just that. We have staff who are eager emailing every day asking for professional learning as it relates to some of the shifts in literacy instruction. We've been able to stand up quite a bit of that this year, but it does allow us to deepen understanding and really open some more hearts and minds to this work. And we know, you know, you, you go slow to go fast. And so this is really giving us an opportunity to do that work with teachers so that when we do put resources in their hands, they are well-equipped to implement and implement well in the service of our students. So I think that's what we can expect as we move forward.
And I'll just finish up with the next step. So as I said, the VDOE list will be coming out and we've been in contact with VDOE and with others who are working on the list and we'll stay connected to that. Once that list is out, then we'll take a look at what's on it and invite vendors to come in. And then we'll stand up a committee and go through this process. Our, our intent would be to come back to the board with a list of materials in the winter. That would give us a lot more time than approving a list right now and trying to implement in the fall. So we would have a longer on-ramp for preparing our, our staff for basal materials in the fall. So I, that is all for this presentation. As, as Dr. Presidio said, this is up for, on consent for vote for tomorrow, Thursday evening.
Thank you very much. To all folks, given that there were, there was only 30 minutes allotted to this section, we will only have one round and the more succinct you could be, the better. We will start with Ms. Bukarski, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for all your work on this. I know it's been ongoing and our, those who served. I'm supportive. It makes sense. I think it's disappointing and it will be disappointing to many. And, you know, you, you talked a little bit about what you're going to be doing to kind of bridge that gap, which I think is important and necessary. So my only question is, I was just surprised that No Red Ink didn't get more support. Can you speak just a little bit about that?
Yeah, I mean, I can give my two cents and then I can, I'll let Donna jump in too. We had a vendor presentation and we do have some schools, we have some elementary schools that are using the free version or perhaps have purchased it. But in general, I think the committee thought it was very sophisticated looking. It was more tailored to a secondary student as opposed to something that looks more elementary. We are going to need to have explicit grammar instruction as part of our change. So I think we were a little surprised too, that the level of support wasn't higher for that. It doesn't mean that as we re-approach this, that we couldn't relook at that at, when we move forward with the adoption. And there's something to be said by not trying to implement too many things at one time. So the Lexia would be this coming fall along with the Newzella. And we do have some schools who are already using Lexia as well and, and Newzella. So we're really getting a lot more consistency across our schools, which I'm excited about. But we could relook at No Red Ink in the future as we, as we take another swipe at this.
Okay, so it sounds, that's where the committee is, but you are willing to, it sounds like you may not be 100%.
I mean, here's what I would say. The committee, you know, we really bring toward, to the board, the committee recommendation. Though in this case, obviously the committee recommended Benchmark and we came forward and said, let's hold on that. I think we're saying, let's hold on everything. Perhaps some of the things on the state list will get to writing. We did not have a lot of writing materials come forward. And therefore there wasn't really anything besides that supplemental No Red Ink for them to look at. So I think writing is a little bit of a, an area of opportunity that we need to focus on.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I also think it's a big area of need. So, you know, not doing, I'm just kind of worried about bridging that gap.
We will need to bridge that gap. It's just the timing of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Couple things. One, I think it's a wise approach to wait to see what the state does because we could be having to reinvent the wheel after the state comes out with its resources. I also think that if the state is coming out with recommendations, then we should be able to benefit from the economy of scale and scope. Having said that, I do have two questions. One, when I add the numbers up at 2.9 million per year for, huh?
Not per year, for the whole seven years.
Okay, so you, you might want to change that chart.
Okay.
Because the way it's written, it says 2.9.
For seven years.
For seven years.
Okay, for a seven-year subscription.
That makes my heart, yes. I, I was having a little bit of a palpitation. Because I added it up and it was over $100 million.
Yes, no, we don't have $100 million.
No, I was going to let you know that. We had a bit of a challenge. Okay, the second thing, you say that you want to have explicit word study resources for three through six. Could you explain a little bit more about what you mean by that?
Sure. So much in the spirit of the work that was done to bridge for this year, where a large team of curriculum and language arts specialists wrote daily lesson plans for K2. It's about 570 daily plans that they stood up. We need to take a look at 3-6. And the first thing we really need to do, which is again, kind of mirrors the approach with K2, is really think about the importance of daily work with word study in 3-6, which is kind of what came with those lesson plans in K2. The second part of that is something for teachers to lean on to do that teaching well. So my team is already working to stand up resources for teachers to use so that they can have daily instruction in word study for grades three through six. So that looks a little different than K2 because students will start to move into morphology and some more complex principles. So we really have to build out that scope and sequence at 3-6 to make sure that we're meeting the needs of students who are working on grade level in word study.
Donna, I don't know if you want to say just a little bit more at a high kind of level about what word study is? You know, when you start talking about morphology, sometimes we, we lose understanding pretty quickly of what you're talking about. So the vocabulary work, the spelling work.
Sure. So in grades three through six, typically students will move through some more complex phonics principles. So they'll learn ambiguous vowels, they'll learn some of the spelling rules that are more elusive, some of those that lead us to believe that the English language isn't as predictable as it actually is. And then beyond those phonics principles, if you will, we really step into what we call morphology. And that's looking at the word parts and how different parts of the word hold meanings, such as prefixes, suffixes, Latin bases, roots, things of that nature. So it really helps students not only to unlock the spelling of the word, but it begins to shift in helping them to unlock the meaning of the word. And so just like the science of reading talks about explicit systematic instruction in phonics, that same level of systematic explicit instruction in word study really gives access to students who are acquiring phonetic and morphological skills at that upper level of the continuum. So often folks think about K2 as learning to read and then those higher levels as reading to learn. But we can't stop moving through that continuum if we expect students to matriculate into more complex content area texts that we know have vocabulary that contains some of these word parts that make those texts more complex. So we just want to make sure that we're offering that same level of word level work for our younger students. We're carrying that work forward through sixth grade so that students are set up for success in middle school when they start to encounter some of that complexity.
So I very much appreciate that explanation. I do think that it's going to be really important, especially for our community, to better understand why we are using terminology word study versus moving away from the lexicon of the Orthon Gillyham, which is more of the phonetic or phonemic, phonemic awareness. And so I do think we need to be more explicit in how we're going to do that. I would also appreciate when we present this information to do that crosswalk because the community expects us to follow through on the recommendations this board had of moving more towards the science of reading. The other thing that I did want to raise, because it is in the legislative package, the language on reading recovery. And that the reading recovery piece is now moved into the overall literacy piece versus in the past, there was language on reading recovery in the at-risk add-on language. And so I wanted the board to understand that moving that language and actually eliminating the reading recovery from the at-risk actually mainstreams the importance of reading recovery for all students at all different levels. Does that make sense?
So the reading recovery as an intervention, as a product, capital R, capital R, has been in our system for a long time. We've actually moved away from it to a great extent. And with the most recent legislation, they have eliminated the use of reading recovery as, as an intervention. I'm not sure that it really moves into our, into our tier one in that way. I, I don't, I don't know that I would, I would see it that way. But it certainly is something that you are correct. It has been eliminated from a list of supported interventions at the state level.
Okay, and so can you do the crosswork walk on the?
Yes, and, and really, you know, today's presentation was about our recommendations and we wanted to give you a little taste that we plan on, what we plan on doing next year, pending your approval tomorrow evening. But we do need to build out in much more detail what next year will look like. And we're happy to, to share that, you know, we can share that through a Brabham briefing. So you all would have that and we would look to be posting it on our, our website that we've created around this, around this work.
So I would appreciate as you build out that project management plan and you share it with us, that the project management plan includes not only the course curriculum, the development of the curriculum materials, but also the professional development piece.
Of course.
Thank you.
Those two things go hand in hand.
Absolutely. But we, a project management plan to get there would be very helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Ms. Keys-Gamar, followed by Ms. Omesh.
Yes, thank you. I, I just, I think I want to understand some of the basics of kind of how we got where we are. I don't object to the proposed plan. But with respect to the committee, did, did the committee members have an understanding of the structured literacy goals that the board has laid out? And, because I, go ahead.
We did some orientation in our limited timeframe to be, be clear on the goals, right? That the board had put this forward and, and that we were committed and we were in process of this work. Now, what probably did vary is people's depth of understanding or their depth of beliefs because we didn't screen people for those kinds of things. But I think the process in itself was, was a learning opportunity and an opportunity, you know, for people to come together and, and understand more what this looks like. But, so I would say that it was clear to them that one of the main characteristics we were looking for is that alignment to the science of reading.
So after you shared the goals, their exposure primarily was to these products through, through the various companies that were making the presentations?
Yes, they, they would come and make presentations. And I want to say that both Benchmark and, and Amplify, the two core materials, did make it through our, our F P process as aligned, right? And as I said, there's a continuum of alignment that people could agree or disagree on. But both of them met the threshold of alignment. But certainly the people on the committee had varying likes or dislikes about how much it was aligned to the science of reading.
Okay. And so the ones that you're recommending right now, are those online programs or?
So the Newzella is an online, is an online program. The Lexia has a component of both. It has a, a part that is more personalized for students online. And then there also are some pieces that are, are teacher-student face-to-face kind of materials. But there, the Lexia, one of the, the best things about Lexia, I think, in this timeframe and especially how we're selecting it, is that it's going to, it's going to really serve us well in intervention, where we know we have a lot of students who need intervention, especially three through six, right? Who didn't have the opportunity to receive the explicit phonics instruction. So we'll be able to use it as an intervention tool. And it also is a support in our tier one. So every student, I think you all know during the pandemic, we've been using Imagine Learning, which was what, something for personalized learning. And that definitely has some strengths, but it does lack the alignment that we're looking for. And it lacks the, the really foundational skill building that we're looking for. So we will be sunsetting that piece of software. And so then we'll have Lexia in all our elementary classrooms.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm just really looking to make sure that we're adjusting what we're using to the learning styles of various students. Certainly online can be helpful for many students. For others, it's off-putting, right? And we, you know, we've lost, you know, we had some learning loss during the pandemic. I, I know you guys are doing your job. I just want to make these particular points because the, the most vulnerable students are the ones that, you know, those that, there were a number of students that were hit really hard. And those maybe also be some of the kids that may not, may or may not benefit from an online, online program.
Absolutely.
So I'm trying to figure out, or have we, what are we doing to try to make sure we cover that gap? I see Dr. Presidio wants to speak.
Well, I mean, again, Noel and Donna could say a little bit more about this. But one of the, one of the strengths, I think, of the, the online component is that it is really adaptive to the student's individual skill level and language level. So some of the students, for example, that might be emerging, you know, English language learners, there's adaptability with those resources. Obviously, we wouldn't want to just give students digital resources for them to interact with. But it gives us that component that again, I think is missing otherwise if, if, if we don't purchase that particular component.
I'm, I'm certainly not advocating otherwise. Just want to make sure we cover those points.
Absolutely.
And so overall, we're looking for those programs that do reinforce our plans to improve the structured literacy program.
Absolutely.
So, approach. So I do have one sort of, you know, state-generated just because of words that have been spoken worry with respect to things that, you know, have been said at the state level and what is being weeded out and that sort of thing. You know, the, the phrase divisive topics comes to mind. How, how do we anticipate that will impact any suggestions that we get coming down the road when you want to choose from those resources?
Yeah, it's a really important point. I mean, we don't know exactly where the state is going to go in their work. So we need to pay close attention to that. I will say Noel and Donna have been in a lot of communication, both with the state and perhaps even more importantly with Dr. Solari, who you'll remember who was here to present to the board as we talked about the work around science of reading and the shifts that we're trying to make. And she is really the main kind of liaison working with the state around trying to figure out what this process is going to look like in terms of the adoption, what titles would be selected, what vendors, what publishers would be selected. So we're trying to get insider information. We're not really, haven't been very successful with that. But we do feel pretty confident that at least VDOE is being advised and supported in the process by people who have expertise in the area as well as whom share some, some of the same values and beliefs that we have around equity. So it's yet to be determined what that final list will look like, but we feel pretty confident that it, it will yield good results that we would want to be able to take advantage of.
Well, I will hope with you. Thank you.
Right.
Happy to follow, actually. So I generally am supportive. Thank you all for your efforts here and clearly the process has been going on for some time. And I especially appreciate your, your courage to say, to come and tell us to pause on all of this. I, I did have a question though. So if, if a certain material is not listed on the approved list, does that necessarily make it not approved?
So what has, long ago, the state always put out lists, right? So it's only been the last 10 years or so where we've had to go through this RFP process. So when you go through a local adoption off a state list, you do have the ability to, to invite some others into the process. I think in this case though, we would need to be sure that whatever we put through the process would be approved at the state level because they have said in legislation that we have to go off their list or it has to get, and if we write our own, the state will need to approve it as well. So they're very tight on this, especially at that primary level, to ensure that school, school divisions are not going rogue.
They preempted our loopholes. Okay.
Ms. Omesh, can I just say something too? So far, the science of reading is passing with huge bipartisan numbers in the General Assembly. I think our leaders in Virginia, including this person here, who will be in a state role, is going to make sure that we stick to the science of reading and the practitioners. And frankly, I see right now bipartisan support. And frankly, I see right now bipartisan support around this work. And I know there's the worries about where this may go, but it's not divisive to give kids fundamental understandings of literacy. That's what's good for all kids and, you know, we'll keep posted. But so far, the numbers have been, and again, if you're hearing something else, Noelle or Sloan, we're seeing overwhelming support from both parties in agreement that this is the right direction. And Fairfax has really been in the lead place of working with our stakeholders here internally and externally, our groups, to say we need to push forward. So we'll keep posted. But I'm very hopeful that perhaps in some other areas where we are seeing some differences of opinion, we're going to stay united around this.
Yeah, it's backed by the evidence, though I won't speak too soon on anything anymore. Okay. Which brings me, can you just refresh my memory a little bit? I'm sensitive to the idea of differentiation and teachers having kind of all kinds of resources to decide versus standardizing or centralizing kind of our decision. Can you just walk me through a little bit of the logic of how we got here? And then just remind me how many people were part of this committee? Because I'm also sensitive to have representative or perhaps not. It might be.
The committee, if I remember, was forty?
Forty-six.
Forty-six people. So there were forty-six people.
And instructional areas, too, like special ed, English learner, et cetera?
Yes. So for, well, there's two, if you, truth be told, there's two committees. There's first the RFP committee that's more internal, right? And on that internal committee, we have the central office experts from all the different offices that go through to do the initial looking at the materials to see what will go forward to the committee. And so when the committee comes together, it's made up of your representatives that you all selected, as well as principals, as well as teachers, as well as, who else? Parents, no, parents would have been the people from you all. Those are really the main players. So it's administrators, teachers, and then your community members. The other question, as far as the process and teacher choice, you know, one of the questions that people have asked, oh, you know, is differentiation going away? Everyone's the same. And differentiation is not going away. This instruction is intended to be very responsive. What's kind of locked down here, though, is a scope and sequence and expectation that students will master certain skills. And when they don't master it, they will receive instruction. So it's tighter on the what. But if we know that students are still going to move, some are going to move this very quickly and others are going to take more time and need more differentiation. So it is a very responsive approach. I think if you're going to just talk broadly, we were definitely, we were balanced literacy, moving more towards, you know, alignment to the science of reading or structured literacy. Both those things kind of are used interchangeably. And with, the difference is the explicitness in which we're going to really be and which we have already started to approach the phonics and the phonological awareness part of our instruction. We still want kids to read books. We still want kids to write. We still want kids to have the joy of reading. None of that is going away. But just ensuring that those foundational skills are taught explicitly and that students have mastered them and students receive support within their classroom if they don't, do not master them, is where we're going.
Yeah, it seems like a difference of approach, which, I mean.
It is a difference. It is a difference. And, you know, it has been, as I said, I mean, there's been high points and low points this year, for sure, where people are really struggling. People are trying. People are trying. It's a huge shift for people who have been in the county perhaps for 20 years. And this is all we've talked about is balanced literacy, right? So now all of a sudden, we're coming out with this whole new thing. So I just, you know, I appreciate people who are engaged and asking questions and really trying to move forward. And we've already seen, we've already seen, you know, shifting tides.
I appreciate that. I just want to point out, my time was running for the entirety of Nicole's comment.
I'm sorry.
But, no, no. So I reclaim my time. But no, thank you. That's very helpful, actually. And just wanting to be mindful of, again, keeping in mind the different ways students learn that Ms. Kizgamar was pointing out. And so then that brings me to a question. Have we weighed, in looking at these options based on the recommendations, like price comparison, too? Because if one option is a lot more expensive and it's close in favorability to another, that would lead me to maybe skew towards the, right, the more affordable option. Did we consider that at all in coming up with this?
Well, after the committee makes their recommendations, we do not, we do not negotiate with all the companies. We only negotiated with all of the companies at the committee. So we negotiated with Benchmark and we knew how much that was going to cost, right? We negotiated with Newzella. And so we don't negotiate with everyone. So price point has not been, obviously, we could get to the end and not be able to afford it. But in the initial, initial sort of information they give you in RFP, you can kind of see they're in the affordability range. I think our, we always want to be good stewards of resources, but typically, the things that come out on top are within the realm of affordability and the range isn't that great.
Yeah. No, it's not that, you know, this is not reasonable. It's more so relatively, I don't have a context to be able to determine if they're comparable in quality, right?
Yeah, with the interventions, you saw the long list of interventions. Some of those, the interventions took so many different forms. So it wouldn't really be possible to compare like Alexia to some of the others because some of them were, had no online component, right? Some of them weren't ever going to be a tier one support like Lexia is going to be.
No, that's fair.
So it's kind of hard to compare it sometimes.
Yeah. And I would add, too, that as part of that, like initial part of the vetting of the resources, we do a lot of the, looking at the materials with that, with the costing hidden for us so that we're not looking at materials against our criteria with that cost in the back of our head. Because our, we are charged with finding the best resource. So we do that work kind of using that blind approach where the cost is hidden. But once we move forward before it comes to committee, we do have access to the cost summary for each of the resources that were available to us in the RFP. So that's the work. For example, in the intervention category, we saw all of our intervention resources and we saw the price point for each. And we were able to do what you've suggested is compare those like products to see which, in terms of affordability, is, you know, we were able to consider that in our scoring of those as part of the process. So as Noelle mentioned, you're just kind of seeing the outcome of that work. It was done on the other end.
Yeah, no, no. And I just wanted to kind of hear the thought process. I appreciate that because I don't want to end up, you know, we chose the most expensive by far and there are comparable ones that, in quality. So I appreciate that. I also wanted to ask about whether we've screened these resources at all for the cultural responsiveness piece, which seems to be what people were, you know, one of the main things that people were concerned about. There's always just base neutral of like not causing harm, but then ideally, also making sure kids feel seen in it, that it's accessible to all kinds of kids, disability or, again, limited English or whatever it might be. I heard you say that there's differentiation there for some who are developing their English. But I am curious about whether we've done, yeah, some deeper digging to make sure the resources, the content material is representative.
So that's part of our process always, right? And I don't, I won't promise you that every single part of Lexia has been looked at. And, you know, some of that's impossible to do when you have a computer generated. But it was a big part of people coming into our, into Willow Oaks and spending hours poring over things and finding things. And we, that happens with resources we've already purchased and we have a process for contacting vendors if that happens. But I think these probably have had more scrutiny than anything I've seen in the past because there was just a high interest in knowing that these were going to be incredibly impactful and reach many, many students. So as I said, I'm really proud that we have a high standard and it is challenging.
Yeah. Have we completed the contract negotiation for that before we approve it on Thursday?
We, what we do is we get their price, but we haven't signed any contracts or anything. If you all decide not to move forward, then we would not move forward.
Right, right. I just mean in terms of the terms, oh, well. Yeah. And I say that because I'm wondering if that's something, as we do a deeper dive into what those materials are. Again, not just base neutral of, okay, status quo, like we're not hurting anybody or, you know, perpetuating bad narratives. But perhaps we are encouraging and opting into diverse narratives that are reflective of the diversity of this county and the various stories of, you know, different people. That's something I would love to negotiate with them and trying to be proactive about that.
Yeah. So I would just add to what Noelle said. So as part of the, you know, that initial process, we, one of our requirements was written around what you've just described. And then we also have our committee review for the basal adoption. That was part of the lens through which they were looking, as well as the community feedback. And then as an additional step, and I know, I think Dr. Presidio mentioned, like, we really are leading in this area. When we did talk through the, with the vendors, those recommendation of staff, we also had conversation about what does this look like in our future relationship if and when there's something that's not, as you say, we're looking for a higher threshold than do no harm. And so if there are things that we notice that we find that a teacher comes across and/or something that perhaps isn't even existing yet for us that has the potential to do such a thing, we have written as a part of our negotiations, a process through which there can be collaboration between FCPS and the vendor because we've been very clear about our expectations for cultural responsiveness. And, you know, these vendors share that core value. And so there's an agreement there as part of the contract that would say, this is a process that we would work through together to ensure that the things that we're putting in front of kids make them feel seen and welcome if they belong with this resource. So that's, we have really been mindful of that.
That's a step in the right direction, isn't it?
Yeah, I appreciate that it's explicit in the contract and look forward to kind of seeing how that manifests. So thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Omesh. If there are no objections, I'm going to take my turn because I do have to skedaddle. And Ms. Tolan will be taking over for the remainder of the session. Just a few questions. One that really has been looming for me for a while, why such a gap between the adoption of the language arts materials? It's been so long. And I know typically, it's an eight-year cycle, at least that's what I know it to be.
Well, I mean, one factor is budgetary needs. And you think about that past 20 years, we were in a great recession. We were eliminating, you know, positions and resources and cutting department budgets. I mean, I think that is one piece of it. Early in my tenure here, we started to initiate a process and our superintendent at the time, we went through a superintendent transition at the time and were asked to go and conduct some literacy audits before we moved forward. We conducted those literacy audits and, you know, obviously made some changes based on some of those recommendations. And then again, we found ourselves in a deficit position and weren't able to pick back up. So I mean, it's just a combination of factors, I think, more than anything.
Oh, I see. Thank you so much. One of the, I did get a chance to go to Willow Oaks. I was one of those people who spent about three hours on two different days just trying to get through all of those materials. And there was a lot. And I definitely saw the differences between those that had a little bit more cultural responsiveness than others, some that were more teacher-friendly than others, because I'm kind of applying my lens as an educator to it. Having said that, the writing piece, while it did not stand out to me in any way, and my notes were just for me, I shared them with no one, they were just for me to kind of organize my thinking, I'm just really concerned about not having the writing supplement because we know that's an area in which it's really difficult to teach writing well, both tier one and tier two. And so I would love to hear what the supports will be while we don't have the supplement for this round, based on the General Assembly's decisions. And what is a stopgap? What will the office do to help support teachers, to help support students, to create writing habits that are repeatable and independent?
Yeah, so some of the work that's outlined with regard to writing is around grammar. So that's something that there's really been, it's been really missing in instruction. It's not present in ways that it probably should be in the current planning and pacing guides. So that's one area of effort. One of our summer curriculum development projects is really standing up some more robust resources around grammar to really kind of carry us through until we have a core resource that, as per our requirements, will help us do a better job of incorporating systematic, explicit grammar instruction into our writing.
And I would also argue that this writing support is needed for two and grades three as well. I think K1, I think we're probably in very good shape. But I think as we're getting into the third grade level particularly, where students are reading to learn and writing to express more fully, that we will need some additional supports there, not just the four to six.
Yep, we're going to put it in three, six for the summer work.
Oh, that sounds good. Thank you so much. I also heard that you talked about Imagine Learning, which in my experience with using that resource, it's a tool that was utilized primarily for ELL students. And I know when I first started visiting schools, schools were very concerned that they did not have access to it because it's expensive and they had to procure it on their own. But you're saying it's provided and it's being sunset?
Well, as part of, as part of the benefits of COVID, when we went virtual, we wanted to quickly find something that we could put in place, both in reading and math. And in the multiple PowerPoints that we provided, Imagine Learning and ST Math were the two things that we provided to all schools during the pandemic. And it will continue, Imagine Learning will continue to be used on a limited basis with some of our English learners. We've worked with Rich Polio and his team and there's still some appropriate placement for that. But it really doesn't align to the approach that we're moving towards, so it doesn't make sense to keep it as a core resource in that way.
And that makes sense to me as well. I did not realize was being utilized in that way. As a resource for ELL students, it will still be supported by the division or will the cost now be shifted over to the schools?
We typically do that with our Title III funds and through our ESOL team.
So schools won't have to make those hard decisions.
No, and I mean, it's not something that, a lot of it's being used actually with older students, older Ls, more than our elementary Ls. And that has been supported.
Even high schoolers. Absolutely. Thank you. One of the things that I would love for you to share, and again, it doesn't have to be now because I don't think you'll have that information at the tip of your fingertips, we do have many schools that are utilizing some of these resources already. And I would love to have a sense of how many of our schools are doing so. For example, Newzella, I know that's been used at Bailey's Upper and Bailey's Lower for many years. I know that Lexia has also used, I want to say, is it Beechtree? I would love to get a sense of how many of our elementary schools are already utilizing some of these resources. That might be helpful to help folks understand, you know, what the shift actually is. Because I do know many of my teachers, well, they're not my teachers, many of the teachers in the schools that I represent were the signatories on that letter, really expressing their concerns around not having this information and not seeing how it fits into their current practice. And that looks like it's my time, so I will stop there.
I can't tell you the number of schools that are currently using Newzella Language Arts because there's a free component to the program that I think is leveraged by many. But I can tell you that 120 of our elementary schools are utilizing Lexia Core 5.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for your leadership today. Ms. Cohen?
Can I just jump in? I'm sorry, there are a few of us that need to leave and you're not going to have quorum. So if we can quickly kind of get this going.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we finish at four, people, do we need to be done before that? Okay.
To say I'm one person that had to leave 20 minutes ago, but I'm trying to. Thank you.
Yeah, Ms. Cohen.
And just in the same spirit, staff does have a meeting at four o'clock. We assumed it was over 3:30. We had 30 minutes. If we can finish by four, that would be great, if possible.
I'll talk super fast. So the 46 people on the committee, were you able to parse out the feedback of staff versus community members? And so the 46%, so Red Ink is also, like, I'm sitting here with like, I'm just shocked by the Red Ink number. I, even in the Cohen household, it gets like a 60%. So I'm like, I was very surprised. One kid's like, oh, I love it. It's great. And the other one's like, meh. So, which 15-year-old meh to me means like, it's wonderful. So did the, did the staff feedback on Red Ink mirror the overall percentage that you got from the community?
So the committee are those, we only capture percentage of support from the committee. So that percentage is reflecting only the committee's support.
Okay.
And what we have are feedback comments from the general public from, as part of community review. And I think there might have been one comment on no Red Ink for, from committee feedback. The majority was around core and intervention. So all of that percentage that you see there, that is committee feedback. And as Noelle mentioned, there was just, I think the big idea that I can really think about from that committee feedback was around, I think, just this idea that it's been traditionally used with secondary students. And so perhaps it's kind of heading in, you know, thinking through that lens and how does it look in elementary school with students in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade? So that was what, that was a lot of the feedback consensus around that no Red Ink percentage that you saw.
Okay.
I don't think we have in front of us like what the teachers thought versus the parents. I don't, I don't think we have that in front of us. We could, we could take a look at that. I mean, I, there was an overarching feeling and Dr. Anderson kind of alluded to it, that we're missing a core writing program, right?[1776.88] And so, I think people thought just jumping at a supplement that's really probably more in line with our secondary wasn't the right move at this time.
Gotcha, okay. And what's, is there a role that you see in this for students to give feedback? Like, I do think it's interesting when I say to my kids, like, hey, do you like this program? Do you use ST Math? Do you, you know, I don't know how well surveys go over with our students right now, but I, it's just interesting to see their interaction and why they do or don't like the programs that we choose.
Yeah, historically, when we've done upper-level, like, high school adoptions, that we do include students on the committee, but we have not included students in the committee at this point, so we don't have any student feedback.
I had a class of fourth graders grill me the other day, so I'm not sure. I feel like maybe we can bring that lower there. They asked me about our taxing authority. So, the only other thing I just wanted to ask about was ensuring that any word study that we do, that the daily plans that accompany any word study we incorporate, that that be brought into self-contained classrooms as well. I know that was a piece of feedback that we've continued to get is, I know sometimes the adaptation is difficult, but making sure that we have a really strong program of word study in our self-contained classes, too.
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Teismar Heiser?
Thank you, and I'll try to be quick, because I know people need to leave. I will pick up right where Miss Cohen left off. One of the questions that I've seen is I've seen some RFPs that FCPS has released for literacy and math, actually, instructional materials for students who are not on the adapted curriculum, on the ESOL curriculum, but special education students. And I'm curious how we're reviewing those RFPs and those materials in alignment with what we've done here in terms of looking at new basal materials and what the state's putting out to make sure that what we're doing under special education RFPs also follow the science of reading and follow what this committee has recommended in all of these pieces, the great work that Noel, you and your team have put in here. So, that's my first question, is what's that inner relationship between your work and DSS when looking at materials?
So, they do have separate RFPs running. We had talked and tried to align the timelines, but it didn't quite work out for us this year, so they are moving forward. They had some contracts pending, they need to move forward. But the DSS is part of the steering committee, the governance, they're all, we are all one team as far as the equitable access to literacy work. And so, we usually have representation on their RFPs and they have representation on ours to try and keep that alignment.
So, just out of curiosity, so, you know, if these are students who are special education students, what, for the special education RFP materials, how does that relate to the materials that you're, that you're getting as well? Like, is it in addition to, is it separate from, like, how will they be used?
I think we, you know, we often have a menu of interventions, right? As we think of tier-two and tier-three interventions and where students might get that intervention from. So, it creates a menu for different purposes. So, I think they work in tandem or in parallel with choosing the best resource for the student need.
But there's still a line in terms of the work we're doing on echolaxis to literacy? That's, that was my question. And then, I'm just glad to say Newzella made the list, because as a kid, as someone whose kid loves Newzella and has used it for many years, it's a great resource. So, I'm just glad to see that one made the list. And for Lexia, I would just put out perhaps maybe some work done to make sure that it's being used. I mean, again, I'm still with our special education students, in the way that's actually getting to their learning. Sometimes I've seen students just try to go as fast as they can without making sure that it's being accurate. So, there's some implementation pieces on that, and that goes back to some of that. Online learning may not work as well for some students as others. That was really it. I wanted to make sure that the work that we're doing goes across general education RFPs and special education RFPs. And do you know if the state's having a list for special education resources as well, or is that, that you're required to choose from, or is that really just more for what we're doing on the general ed side?
I actually have not heard anything explicit about that, but I can't imagine that it's, it's all part and parcel. I mean, special ed has been aligned to the science of reading for some time, so I think we'll, we'll find much alignment there.
Thank you. I'm giving you a minute back to those who need to leave.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I just have one quick question. Given the delay, I know some of our schools with their ester money have purchased decodable texts and things like that. Do you anticipate that schools will be spending more money maybe into this next year if we don't purchase these resources?
So, we are currently investigating the possibility of buying some things centrally to help students, to help schools with that, because we know they have bookrooms that are filled with leveled readers. We know the next step of them really advancing the work around phonics and phonological awareness is to have those decodables for small group instruction. So, can't get too far out ahead of that today, but yes, we're in process so that we can, we can have something, because we don't want it to rely on individual school choice.
And we did meet with our principals to let them know that as well and to ask them to just stand by while we try to get that finalized and not to be spending money on things that we might be able to get at the division level.
And then you mentioned, like, 570 lessons that you've already developed, and then you just mentioned that the state will have to, are those the types of lessons, the state will okay, or is that different?
No, I don't think so. I mean, in the meantime, the Virginia Literacy Act doesn't actually even take place until 2024, so the lessons that we're writing now are perhaps a stopgap measure to actually us purchasing something prior to that 2024, so we'll be okay.
Got it, got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate all the information. I think with that, we will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody.